As many of the servants of Alderman will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the pledge of allegiance, after which I would like to yield to Reverend Lively to lead us in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most prayers come this week, we especially thank you for the freedoms we enjoy. With those freedoms, we accept the responsibilities that come with them. We ask for ourselves, we ask for this board, your wisdom, your compassion, your justice, and your patience as we go about the work you put upon us. I pray in your most holy name, amen.
You have before you the written agenda? Are there any proposed changes to the agendas? Written. Any proposed changes? Alderman Walker.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item 11B to A under Planning to item A under Board Business.
All right, proposed revision is to reorder the agenda, moving what was previously item 11B to A, the discussion and consideration of VA 16-05, to the first item under Board Business, and moving the rest of the items down to accommodate the change. Alderman Walker, is that your proposed revision?
Yes.
Any objection? Any objection? Any objection saying none? Please note the change to the agenda. Alderman Walker, do you have further proposed revisions?
No.
Any further proposed revisions from the room, Mr. Board? Any further proposed revision? City Attorney has recommended.
Board, I wanted you to be informed on something. I understand from speaking with Rodney Lincoln that he just recently received the grant agreement that is the first item under Airport Business, so that didn't have a chance to be negotiated before it got into the packet. In looking at that agreement, there are multiple provisions that run afoul of the AG opinions that say that the city can't indemnify any other matters such as that. So, the optimum thing legally would be to pull that agreement tonight, to give us two weeks to negotiate those provisions out. Now, I do note that the two matters that follow that seem to be contingent upon that agreement. I talked to Mr. Lincoln on the way in about policy implications of the delay, and he may want to speak more on that, but my legal opinion would be to delay those first three matters to give us a chance to negotiate those provisions out.
Mr. Lincoln, would you like to offer your opinion as to whether those matters need to be heard tonight? All right, without objection, I'm going to remove those items from the agenda. Any objection? Any objection saying none? Items 11A, 1, 2, and 3, all under Airport Business, have been removed from the agenda. Any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Saying none, a motion to approve the agenda is revised, just in order?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Alderman Little to approve the agenda as revised. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Winn. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The first matter that you have before you is the consideration of the minutes of the June 7, 2016, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the minutes of the June 7, 2016, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi incorporating any and all changes as recommended by the city attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Winn. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
All right, the city attorney is asked to be recognized.
Mr. City Clerk, I noticed two provisions in these minutes where you had left a placeholder for items to be included. One was item 10, a resolution, and the other was item number 32, a memo. I know we talked earlier, and you were bringing those items to the table. Do you have those?
Yes, sir. I have them, and I'm wordful.
And those will be included upon approval tonight? Thank you, ma'am.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have gone against, the motion passes. Next matter on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of the June 21, 2016, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of the June 21, 2016, minutes of the meeting of Mayor and Board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi incorporating any and all changes recommended by the city attorney, otherwise as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
The city attorney is once again asked to be recognized.
Same question, City Clerk. Item number 34, you were placeholding for the Synergetics contract. Do you have that?
Yes, I have received them since afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call, Mayor. All right, by a vote of yea, please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain, as the city clerk calls your name.
May I be recognized before we do the roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, this is a point of inquiry. You know, I don't know what the basis of this objection is, but let me get you on the record before this roll is called. And the minutes that before this board pertains to the last meeting of this Mayor and Board of Alderman. So, before this vote is taken, I'd like for you to brief the mayor, the vice mayor, and the remainder of the board on the legality of matters that were officially taken by the board at its official meet that was last held, and/or at any other meeting. In your explanation, talk about, once a matter is duly passed and seconded, that that matter is an official act, and the action that was taken by a board at any meeting represents the voice of the city, and that the law is well settled in this great state of Mississippi, that the board speaks through its minutes. So, I'm not understanding the basis of the objections that are coming from the north and the south ends of this table. So, I'm trying to make sure it's no law that I am unaware of in this great state. I think I'm well versed in administrative law due to my many years of practice. So, will you please inform us on the law, and so I can, so we can all clearly understand our legal rights as a board and as a city, so we can be clearly informed before this roll call is taken?
Sure, Vice Mayor, and I agree with your preface there. Matters officially taken by the board do, in fact, by law, have to be put into the minutes. And in reviewing the packet today, I do believe that it's an accurate recitation of the official acts that were taken on the meeting in question. And if there's a debate or a dispute about a particular item in the minutes, the appropriate thing to do would be to address that item rather than not approve the whole minutes. Not approving the whole minutes would put the board at some jeopardy if all of those items were rightfully voted on and considered by the board, which in my opinion, from a procedural standpoint, not a substantive standpoint, they were at the meeting in question.
Mr. City Attorney, one further question. From my recollection, you were at this meeting from the beginning to the end, is that correct?
I was.
And the board has charged you to review the entire minutes, and you have done those minutes in the entirety, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Attorney, am I correct that the minutes that are contained in our packing that before us for consideration at this time duly, accurately, and completely, and totally, and legally reflect all official acts and actions that were taken at the last meeting of this mayor and board?
That's correct, subject to my revisions that I passed to the city clerk this afternoon.
Mr. Attorney, finally, are you aware, Mr. Attorney, based upon your expertise and your background and abilities and knowledge of this administrative law, is there any legal basis in your expert opinion that would preclude this board of Alderman, together with the mayor, from adopting and passing these minutes that's before us?
There's not.
Finally, Mr. Attorney, my last question. What would be the legal ramifications, if any, Mr. Attorney, if this set of minutes is not adopted by this mayor and board tonight?
Unless there is a good faith basis for a challenge, which I don't know what the objection is, it would put the city at some legal peril if it's just an arbitrary and capricious nonapproval of the minutes.
I yield, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Alderman Ball.
The minutes, Kevin, are both the same thing. The minute from the 7th and the minutes from the 17th, they carry the same information that came. And then, the information she got is not in my, is not in my package. It's over there on her desk. It's not in my package. That's my reason for not voting for it. That's the reason I didn't vote for it then, and I'm not going to vote for it now, because it's not in my package, it's over there. And these are the same minutes on both 17th and 7th. If you look at the packet, I've got the same minutes in both of them. That's why my vote is with you.
Okay, I broke the procedure. We were in a vote, and this started as a point of order inquiry, and I cannot reopen the floor for speaking at this point in time. The members requested a roll call vote, so we will have a roll call vote. At this time, please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain on the motion to adopt the minutes, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carr.
Yea.
Alderman Winn.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Carr. I don't remember. I'm so sorry. Alderman Ball.
Yea.
Alderman Mayor.
Yea.
Last name Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Ball.
Nay.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, this motion passes. The next matter before us is announcements and comments by the mayor and members of the board. And I have two announcements tonight that are at the opposite ends of the emotional spectrum. First, I want to recognize the fact that we all received some sad news yesterday, and that was of the death of Mr. Willie Turner. Our community mourns that loss, and our city family mourns that loss, as Mr. Turner was a 25-year employee of the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department, rising all the way up the ranks to a driver in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. And it is also noteworthy that Mr. Turner is, Mr. Alderman Turner's brother, who is a citizen observer and regularly participates in our board meetings with us. Mr. Turner, please make sure the family knows that your brother's city family misses him very, very much. Now, I do have some good news tonight as well, and that is, last week, the city attended the Municipal League Conference, as we do every year. This is one of the largest conferences held each year in the state of Mississippi. Not only does it include all of the elected officials from the over 300 municipalities in the state of Mississippi, but includes many staff members from the cities as well. And towards the end of the conference every year, all 3,000 of us sit down at a banquet, and they give nine awards at that banquet for the various things going on in city government throughout the state of Mississippi. I am pleased to share with you, and I wanted to share our award with you, that the city of Starkville was not only given an award at the conference this year, but we were given the overall award. And it was an honor and a privilege to stand with the members of the board, and our staff, and the developers of the Mill at MSU project, which was the basis of our award, and be recognized. Not only is it something that we will always treasure here at City Hall, but news of that conference spreads far and wide, and I think it serves the city very well that people will be going back to the places from which they came with some good news to share about the city of Starkville. With that, that concludes my announcements and comments this evening. Are there any announcements and comments by the members of the board? Alderman Winn.
Thank you so much. Mr. Harmon Peters, will you please come forward?
Mr. Peters, I hope that you got some sleep last night, because we truly had a celebration here in the city of Starkville at the Sportsplex on last night. I want to say thank you to you and your personnel for an amazing job that you all did, from the music, to the activities, to the hot dogs, to the big old scoops of ice cream. It was a celebration here in Starkville last night. I think I may have been the only Alderman in attendance on that. I just want to let you know that I personally say thank you. The music was awesome, from Lee Greenwood's song, "God Bless the USA," to Pharrell's song, "Happy." You had it down pat. The attendees took to the feel, dancing to the music. It was just a great night here in the city of Starkville. I captured a picture, and I posted it to my Facebook page, and it was priceless, because that soccer field was loaded with the people from Star Vegas last night in support of you and in the celebration of July 4th. Additionally, Chief Nichols and Chief Yarborough, will you two please come on? Stay there, Mr. Peters, because yours could not have been a success without the members of the fire department being there to help assist with safety as it relates to the fireworks. And Chief Nichols, your PD personnel was there monitoring the crowd. It was just a great night last night in the city of Starkville. And yesterday, as I left home, you know, it started to rain, and I was like, oh, no, how can we do this? How's the rain going? Because I didn't want it to affect us, because we paid for those fireworks. Mr. Peters, you had it timed perfectly that we needed to go ahead and do those fireworks last night, because the crowd got concerned, you and your personnel got concerned. At 8:40, we were rolling those fireworks, you all turned off the light after that National Anthem was sang. And guess what? It was a beautiful sky here in Starkville. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Chief Nichols. Thank you. Chief Yarborough, let me say this, I had an opportunity to ride to the Sportsplex yesterday with your fire personnel. And thank you for always allowing me to do that. I enjoy going down Highway 12, honking the horn. We passed by a fire station, what is that, 3? At a fire station 4, at Academy Road. And I learned that your firemen kind of play little tricks on each other. All of the remotes operate the same firehouses. So, what they did was, they took it and let their garage door down, and they laughed about it. So, I kind of got a kick out of that, and I enjoyed being with them on last night. So, I want to say again, thanks to the three of you. Mr. Peters, you just outdid it last night. Thank you. Okay. Next, something I want to touch on is our consent agenda. Board members, what I've learned, and you all have learned, is that we have full discretion over our consent agenda by a majority vote. We no longer have consent agendas thus far. We're staying here at the meetings. 7:30, we're here. 8:30, we're here. 9:30, sometimes 10:00, we have been here as long as 11 o'clock at night. While I was on the coast last week, I had a conversation with different colleagues from larger municipalities, and when I said that we were at our board meetings until that time of night, I can tell you, I shared it in a class, and the people like, laughed like, what do you all do? I say, well, one Alderman doesn't allow the consent agenda. And I call no name and get no blame, that person sits to the west of me, and again, I call no name, in a ward whose number is greater than 5, less than 7, and it's the sum of 3 plus 3. This has been going on and on, and it's so embarrassing, because we have department heads here that don't live in our city. Our city clerk commutes in from Upright. We have our city planner from Westport, our board council from Columbus, and yet, all of us are sitting in here at night. Now, whereas I don't have children to go home to, our department heads, some of them have families. They work eight hours a day. And in addition to that, we expect them to come to a meeting, board order, and sit in here for four hours. That means 12 or 13 hours. That's what our department heads have to do. But they are not compensated for it. Well, I checked on that in class, because I wanted to know that last week, because I wanted to ask the board members. If we're going to sit up here at our board meeting, that we have control over, and do away with this consent agenda, then we need to compensate these people. Well, because all of our city department heads, with the exception of one, make over $46,000 and some dollars, and that's our state cap guideline. So, by state law, we can't compensate them, so I'm sorry for that. And only one of them is part-time. It's sad, it's unfortunate, and it's embarrassing. We have businessmen who come to our board meetings, some of them have lawyers with them. Their lawyers charge them a fee per hour. So, they're already coming to our city, which they deem most of the time as being unfriendly because of our unfriendly landscape and our sidewalk ordinance that we have on them, and it's just so sad and embarrassing and unfortunate. Board members, at any time that you wish, by a majority vote, and let me say this, on July 2, 2013, seven members of this board, we adopted the standard code of parliamentary procedure. Little did we know that an Alderman who represents a ward that is greater than 5, less than 7, and it's the sum of 5 plus 1, would use this against us, the consent agenda. Now, according to that person, and I respect the residents of Ward 6, if it is that they want a transparent consent agenda, but if a resident of my ward, and one called me and talked about this, said to me, I want you all to stay up there five hours and go over all of the items, including who wants to be on the tree advisory board, when nobody else has applied but them in the first, last five years, I would tell them, gear up and run for office and come sit in my shoes. This is sad and unfortunate, that one person is being allowed to hijack a consent agenda when the members of this board elected that person to be the vice mayor for the city of Starkville. I'm disappointed, disappointed, sad and unfortunate, and tonight is going to be my last speech. Board members, anytime that you all get ready, and somebody want to second it, this is when I'm going to read to y'all, put the motion on the floor, and it'll be prepared like this. Moved that the city continue to use the standard code of parliamentary procedure, 4th edition by Ale Sturgeon, as the procedural rules for conducting Board of Alderman meetings, with the exception that if the board uses a consent agenda, the items on the consent agenda shall be determined by a majority vote of the board, and that any previous board order, to the contrary, is hereby rescinded. And then, I would add on that, effective immediately. Alderman, when you're ready to do away with what we did, I got it ready, ready for the second, and by a majority, we can stop this nonsense tonight. Mayor, I yield the floor at this time. Thank you.
Any further comments by the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ball.
Good evening, mayor, board, and audience. Mine is about the consent agenda also, but it's in a different form. I have a lot of citizens and a lot of constituents of mine like the consent agenda. They want to hear everything on the consent agenda. They don't like the rubber stamp that we put on it. But my problem, this is my second term, and it's something I have said for eight years, we control this agenda. We do not have to make this agenda this large. We can set this agenda so that we can get out on time. We are men's and women's and mayor, we should be able to sit down and reason with one another, and be able to come to some kind of agreement that this agenda don't be like this. It's our fault. It's not the public's fault, because the public want to hear what we're doing. They don't want us to hide anything from them. And they feel like, once we go with a consent agenda, we are hiding some things from them. And this, we are here, we are all elected by the peoples and for the peoples. We don't need to hide anything from them. What we need to do, be men's and women's, and sit down and reason, and shorten this agenda, because this agenda do not have to be like this every week. And I've said this for seven years, and it's still the same thing that's going on.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Alderman Carr.
City Attorney, have you seen this proposed motion?
I have.
Is that how, I think my intention would be to shorten the agenda one way or another, since we can't do consent. Does this meet all kind of legal requirements that you see that we must have?
Procedurely, the board can do it. I have tremendous concerns about the legal ramifications if the board does that. I think if it's challenged, the board would likely lose that challenge. So, my advice has been and continues to be that grouping of items in a consent agenda by majority vote would expose the board to legal peril.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, let me ask you this. Will you state for me yes or no? Would you say that the rewards would certainly outweigh the risk of this?
I can't say yes or no, because that's totally y'all's call as a board. That's a public policy consideration that board members have to weigh. I can't say yes or no to that. I'm sorry, Alderman.
Let me see, I'm trying to find another way to word this without exposing something. Let me do it. Counsel, in our phone conversation, did you tell me, state to me?
Now, are you going to talk about attorney flag privilege conversation?
Well, then, I won't say it then. Thank you. Well, let me say this. The rewards would certainly outweigh the risk of this. And I'll put it in my southern voice. The rewards would certainly outweigh the risk of this. I say, Alderman, you all have children. We're not trying to hide anything from the public, but my constituents, nobody want to watch a Board of Alderman meeting for five hours and talk about somebody being on the tree advisory committee. Nobody wants to do that. Nobody. We could have a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour meeting and call it a night, but sitting up here all night long, putting our board at risk. Last time, three Aldermen, myself, Alderman Carr, and Alderman Little, left the meeting because we were tired. It was after 9:00, I had a doctor's appointment. Alderman Carr had to be on the highway that morning. Alderman Little had a meeting. We left, and let me tell you, they pulled something over on us, and we were just in awe. Tonight, I'll be here if they got a city until 5:00. I'm prepared to stay. And if something go on, and three of the members are out, and I can tell you, four are left, and they do something I don't like, I'm going to run out of the room, and I'm going to leave them without a quorum. That's what you do. Just run out of the room. I promise you, if three Aldermen leave this evening, and it's just me, and they do something I don't like, I've full control, I'm going to run out of the room. I'm going to get my person, I'm going to run away so far from here. It is about pitiful at the way that the Board of Alderman for the city of Starkville, known as home to Mississippi State, is conducting meetings. This is awful. I know we know better than this. But I'm going to yield the floor. I yield the floor, ma'am.
Further comments by the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ball.
Like I said, if we find a way to sit down and reason with one another, and we limit our time up and running our mouth, we limit our time, we lose a lot of time running our mouth. If we reason with one another and shorten this agenda, everybody can go home in time. There's no sense that we cannot reason with one another. That's what we're elected for. We reason with every decision we make out for the public. We reason with that. Why we can't reason and shorten this agenda? You don't have to take nothing off the consent agenda if you sit down and reason. And we limit our time talking about every issue come up, and we limit our time, we get out of here. It's 6:00 right now. We ain't looked at an issue yet. It's 6:00 right now. It's us. It's not this agenda. Look at us. We the one causing this delight. We spend at least an hour and a half to two hours every Tuesday night, sitting up here talking about nothing, about nothing, about anything. We sit here that long. If we would limit our conversation about this agenda and go to work, we get out of here.
Further comments from the members of the board? All right, let's.
I'm going to say this, and I'm going to yield the floor.
If it's going to be about the agenda.
Oh, no, no, no.
I ask that we change topic.
Let me say this, and I'm going to yield the floor. Again, I'm ready for us to move on, but I am not the Alderman that consumes about 30 minutes talking about one topic and speaking in the third person, whose number is greater than 5 and less than 7.
Alderman Winn.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. I'm not recognizing anybody else to speak on the topic of the agenda. Are there any further board comments not related to the agenda? Any further board comments? Any further board comments? Saying none, we'll move to citizen comments. At this time, any citizen wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward and introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
My name's Alvin Hummer. I'm 7. I want to recognize my wife, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Alvin.
And Alderman.
Thank you, Al.
Mayor, if you kindly, my baby brother, I'm the oldest, if you would take a letter tomorrow, and let him know that we all appreciate baby brother, any of you, that'd mean a whole lot to us. All right, the citizens, we is fed up with, people supposed to be acting like actors and not children. Mom told me a long time ago, son, don't let people push you up to do stuff. Do your own thing. And 56 years later, that's where I am. But we need to act similar and act like people. Chief Nichols, Chris Taylor, Ms. Lynn, I'd like for you all to let mom know. Uh, Mom told me a long time ago, son, don't let people push you up to do stuff, do your own thing. In fifty-six years later, that's where I am. But, we need to act similar, and act like people. Uh, Chief Nick, Chief Nichols, uh, Chris Taylor, uh, Ms. Lynn, uh, I would like for y'all to let Mom know, that, that I'm gonna be protected, and I'll be all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Let me say, your dedication to be here at this meeting tonight, with all that you are coping with right now, should inspire us all. Further citizen comments?
My name's Chris Taylor, Ward Seven. I got two, two comments. Number one, the paper did not list the Democratic Party yesterday of giving out water. Mr. Peters, did the Democratic Party give out water, you'll say?
Yes.
Yes, we did, thank you. And it was well over three hundred bottles, so it wasn't in the paper, so it'll be corrected tomorrow, next day. Now, we talking about this consent agenda, you know, I've been coming for ten years, and when you all change to get rid of it, that's the best thing ever happened. Some of these people come to these meetings, don't have computers, so they can't do like me, or a few other people, who can see what's all y'all approving, by saying they consent to this, or consent to that. If that the case, didn't have a whole stacker, which I doubt, they said they wanna do that, burn off that, make... Who got a paper stack of the agenda? You, Mr. Vaughn? No, I'm talking about a copy of the whole package. That's what, that's what you had to print out for every citizen almost, that don't have a computer. That's why do away with that consent agenda, we don't need it. I know y'all wanna go home early, I'm like, Mr. Vaughn, you seven want to keep us here. You see, I get up and leave, when I get through with my stuff. So, uh, some of the citizens, you can adjust that, that agenda also. Like, if you know someone from the tree advisor, move it up, to behind the citizen comments or something. You can move stuff on this agenda the way you want to, to get approved, and get some of the citizens outta here, that come in and tell you they got to go. Now, the department heads, now, I don't understand why they all sit here all the time, when you all got a package, so it's a question, an action. Didn't only the department heads need to be here, not everybody. So, uh, just think about what Mr. Vaughn said, I agree with him. You seven make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
I have one, but I know what you gonna say, come and make it anyway, so I have...
If it's not related to your public appearance, you...
Oh, it's not.
This is your three minutes.
Anybody else, I want to get them on, anybody else? I don't want to, I was not gonna say anything about this, but I would just like for y'all to know, that the, uh, agenda for many now, I used to could stay, but I can't, I can't stay. I really can't stay for everything that's going on. But when I do come, I come with a warm, warm heart, and an able body to do what I can do for the citizens of Starkville. I would just like to say, it's time that we all get together, please, let's get together. And another thing, Lisa already said, Officer Lisa already said, that, uh, huh, you know, I'm only, I was only committed for the party. Everybody called me this morning, I felt like I was the mayor, 'cause everybody called me and told me how beautiful everything was, you know, it, that. I was just like y'all, you know, you got a person who can concern about different stuff. And everybody said the time was just right, when they did everything, and as one little boy put it to me, I had awesome time, his ass. It was awesome what they did to the party. He said, "I just never been over there, and it was just awesome." Come on, let's consider all the citizens, they going, and I thank you all for everything.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. And Ms. Isaac, you can stay right there, I'm gonna make one more call, uh, for citizen comments, and you're next on the agenda. Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances, and Ms. Isaac, you'll have the first public appearance this evening, you'll have a maximum of ten minutes, and I ask that you remain for any questions or comments the board may have, once you complete your presentation.
Okay. At this time, again, I would just like to say, good evening to you everybody, because you're part of everything this evening. I would just like to say, I have some concerns here in the city. I do, I have some, and I have a resource guide here, I don't know how many of you have one, and can read, but I called every last once, and I got out of the nursing home. I called to get help here in Starkville. They come to the Board of Alderman, and they want money. Well, they're not using the money for the citizens, because half of the money, I called, they give me a record, and I have to say, "Okay, thank you all," and I never get an ounce of that. But I'm just like a kid on a few things, and this disturbs my heart, it really do, if I get crying, just don't worry about it. But I'm telling you, these smart buses that we got, the routes for the smart buses, they're not designed for people with disabilities. When they placed throughout the city, especially in and around the northwest side of the town, people with disabilities are not able to get on these routes. I'm, just take me for example, I live in Roland, here in South Bend, it don't come that way. I have to go all the way to the hospital, in order to get it. By the time I get there, go to Kroger and give me some ice cream, it melts, it, it melts, I can't even get it home. I don't have a fareway of getting things. Smart buses need, if it's so smart, it needs always to still come over to these different areas and pick up people, 'cause we don't have anything. And I don't have funds to pay everybody to take me where I need to go, because I am on a limited budget. So, in the fall market, I'm talking about public sidewalks, and I'm talking about everything so I can get my ten minute seat. Studies show that people of the color, people with low income, people little known, education have a high rate of chronic, uh, condition. Therefore, they should have assessed the fourth, first, and fifth. What's wrong with West Side Park? We always said we wanna do this for the park, and we wanna do that, what's wrong with having the damn money, one or two times? There's nothing wrong with that, because people down there can't, some don't have transportation to go all the way over to, uh, where it's located at by the park. They don't have the transportation to get over there either. And we got sidewalks, we don't have sidewalks nowhere over in Roland Hills, if you come over here and look, we have nowhere to stop at different places. We need to have a fair and representative to everything that go on. We have utility bills. People call me, like I'm supposed to do something about the utility bill, well, man, I do. That's all I can tell. Do we have anybody that can go back and say, "We have studied here, we have studied on the other side of town, and it shows that the utility bills are out of the list?" We need to, people, we need to get beds, because, you know, I may not be asking the correct question, but can we get somebody to come here and discuss the utilities? Maybe they need to go down to the bus and get a warrant, and say, "We are great, and we know what we're doing." Because right now, the citizens of Starkville need to answer. Okay, and then another thing, great Starkville development ponch, ponch, if you would allow me to say it, ideas that represent the city should be made to be inclusive, not bruffles every time I turn around and they eating. We have folks over in Brookfield Garden, little children, just over there, they don't have bruffles. But every time I turn around, they eating bruffles, and they're not representing the city of Starkville, because it's not people up there of color. It may be a few, but then that's the ones who they want up there on their side. I'm not being on any side. It's staying here in Starkville, and please excuse me, 'cause I get, like I said, I get emotional when I start talking about this stuff. It's been going on, it's been going on and on and on. January seventh is coming fade, you know what it is, y'all know what it is. Privately, some concerned about decisions made on private, along with y'all, once the majority has left. I was in that meeting, and I talked, and I said what I had to say. I was real disappointed. This is not what need to go on. If it is, when January seventh come, you stay at home, please, don't go up there and put your name on no ballot, 'cause I will be fighting against it. It's time now for a change. Starkville, Mississippi, need to be changed. I don't care who don't agree with me, I don't care, but I know right now, we're in a state that need to be changed, and that's our Kibbe Hall camp. Mississippi State got everything they need. They got everything they need, and as for them sharing with us, they may share a little this and a little of that, but they got everything that they need out there. Let's try to work together. Let's try to work together, do what we gotta do. Let's stop fighting among each other, do what we gotta do. And I would appreciate if we do that. And nobody knew what I was talking about, nobody, I see you, Paul, I see, I see you, but nobody know what I was talking about. I just like to know, I'm not, I like you to know, I'm not crazy. But I do have some suggestions. Let's go on with what we supposed to do. Let's go on with what we supposed to do, with all, quit fighting, and I tell you, I don't like, you can go to a, 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 all night party, and you can be there and still gonna make the changes that you need, but this is where I see it. This is for the city of Starkville, Mississippi, our Kibbe Hall camp. Let's do that. Think about West Side, don't, we over there, we don't even have grocery store to go on. We don't have grocery store. Maybe it might change, but right now, you have to come all the way to Kroger, and like I said, the smart bus ain't smart enough to bring. I would just like for Alderman, every last month of it, and I'm not just saying that to my Alderman, because my Alderman, he have job too, but I want y'all to know, I want these citizens to be made by Alderman. This ain't the last time, come if the board say so. I don't know what it may say, but may the grace of the Lord, Jesus Christ, be with all of them, and take it to consideration. We are human on that side of town too. Thank you. Thank you for listening, too.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. Any questions or comments by the members of the board?
Ms. Isaac?
Uh-huh.
Let me say this. Thank you so much. As you know, that my mother was in a wheelchair for many years before she passed away. And I am a big proponent of sidewalks, most definitely. And let me say this, and, and will you state for the record, what, what ward you live in?
St. Rogers Ward.
Okay, so is that Ward Six that you're in?
St. Rogers Ward, Ward Six.
Okay. And let me say this, Ms. Isaac. The board members spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your ward, but it was for a ditch, and I'm sorry that none of that was used for a sidewalk, but we used it for a ditch, at the request of perhaps your Alderman, we supported him on that. And I'm sorry about, you know, I'm sorry if you feel like you were left out. But more than seven hundred and fifty thousand, from the members of this board, several of us supported that, maybe two of them didn't, but the rest of us did. So, I'm sorry that you don't have sidewalks. Um, in my ward, we have beautiful sidewalks, and people use them, they were using them last night, so I'm sorry for that. That makes me sad, that you're sad about that.
It is. And he called coming out, that's another thing, the ditches need to be fixed, 'cause he called us coming out, we got he called everywhere. We need to come on that side of the town and do something. And I, I'm just, I'm filled, when I get filled, I tell you, I'm just filled, and I'm gonna push, and I'm gonna push, and I'm gonna push. We can go to the, to, to the four, five, six, however, but y'all, oh, we gotta do something.
And Ms. Isaac, let me say this, I know now, you know, for many years that you came, you were not in a wheelchair, and you're now in a wheelchair, and you're not able to stay at the meetings four and five hours. Again, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Are there any further comments by the members of the board? Alderman Mayor.
Ms. Isaac, and I don't know if that's in your, in your little book, but the, um, the transit bus will come to your house and pick you up, I believe. There's a two-part application to fill out, um, and the, the smart system will approve that. I will try this week to get that application for you, so we can get that to you.
It's not in here. The air phone don't, don't work.
Okay.
You wanna know, air phone don't work.
Let me, give me a week or so to work on that, and see if I can get, get that application to you. We'll try to get that part...
If there are opportunities, I know, then please...
Get that part done for you.
Anybody else need to do anything with them, they need to talk about, and it's, it's really important, it's really important. Now that I'm in a wheelchair, it's important.
I understand. Mr. Turner, you ride the transit bus quite a bit, you know?
Yes, um, but for wheelchair people, that is not on the route, uh, you can call and ask for the, uh, rights that you're, which, uh, long as you're not in a compound, uh, call them...
Mr. Dorothy doesn't weigh more than about a hundred and five, I know, so she's all right, she'll be fine there. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner, I appreciate that. I'll check on that, Ms. Isaac, for you.
Are there any further comments by the members, Alderman Vaughn?
Ms. Isaac, to get back to sidewalks, it's, it's a lot of areas that sidewalks are not in. Edward and I ride and look and talk about it a lot of times. Somewhere down the line, sidewalk was just a limit from a lot of neighborhoods, and the developers just didn't put sidewalks in, but it wasn't on the Edward watch, it was something that Edward inherited. It was something that's bold inherited about sidewalks, not being all over the city, not in the community, not in the neighborhood. Him and I ride mostly every Friday, and we see this, and I'm sorry that way, because I got some in my, in my ward, and I'm sure some of the other got in their ward, but it was where the development just decided, hey, our engineer department just went to sleep, and the development just got away, just sticking them in with the sidewalks.
Any further comments by the members of the board? Any further comments? Any further comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Isaac. Our next public appearance tonight is by Cornerstone Government Affairs. Uh, this is our contract government consulting group, and, uh, they are here to give us a report on their progress. Uh, Mr. Havlin, I don't have Joel here tonight, uh, the presentation is lovely, could you
Mayor, if it's okay, while he's pulling that up, since you're gonna have a hard copy, we're happy to go ahead and begin, if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity for us to be here this evening, we appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you, and tell you just a little bit of a, of a review of the two thousand sixteen legislative session. Hopefully, he'll be able to pull that up in just a second, so that the entire audience can see, if you have a presentation in front of you. Um, we are Cornerstone Government Affairs, a portion of Cornerstone Government Affairs. My colleague Elliot Flags and I are here, and also on behalf of our colleagues Chris Champion and Joe Sims, we represented you at the state capitol this year during the two thousand sixteen legislative session. Uh, we are a government affairs firm, we're based in Washington, DC, for those of you who don't know, and we have started working with Starkville since earlier this year, and we're very proud of the relationship there is. So, hopefully, everyone is able to see that. One of the first things, the next slide is just an outline of what we're going to talk about, and I know we only have ten minutes, I don't typically talk this fast, but I'm trying very hard to get our entire presentation in. Um, the next slide is just a summary of what we're going to talk about, our capabilities and some of the things that we do, um, for you. You won't be able to, the audience hopefully will be able to see that soon, but, um, the next one that you see on your presentation is just our team. Okay? The next one is just our team. The top row, those of us who are in our Jackson, Mississippi office, and then the next row is a portion of our DC office, then they're also, they have Mississippi ties. I'm very proud to tell you that Susan Sweat, her parents live in Starkville, and then so they are taxpayers. I'll have a college student here next year, and so I'm sure I will contribute a lot of funds to the city as well. Um, we've had almost fifty years of experience working in and around government relations in Mississippi. This was my nineteenth legislative session, Elliot has a little bit fewer years, I'm a little bit older than him, but we've been working in Mississippi and in the legislature for quite some time. We've had about thirty-eight years cumulative of working with the Mississippi Congressional delegation. We have a former chief of staff, who, Senator Roger Wicker, before that Congressman Roger Wicker, legislative directors and staff directors of, of the staff on the Hill as well. We've got extensive, um, experience working in political campaigns, and client engagements, cross-representing clients, and so that we can create economic development opportunities for clients, and we do that with, across the board, with all of our clients. Um, the next one is just simply what we do for all of the people we represent, lobbying, intelligence gathering, crisis communication, strategic counseling, marketing, relationship building, community, and public relations. And then the next one that I wanna head on, is I wanna begin talking about the two thousand sixteen legislative session. I mentioned to you that this was my nineteenth legislative sessions, session, years one through eighteen, add them all up, and they were not nearly as bad as year nineteen. This was probably one of the hardest legislative sessions that I've ever experienced, and those who have been lobbying for a lot longer than I have, say the same thing, it was tumultuous, it was personal, and it was ugly. And I'm being nice about saying that. It was not a good legislative session for the state as a whole. As you know, last week, we had to come in a special session to go, um, pass some legislation so that the governor could dip into some other special funds to balance the state's budget. Starkville is a part of a general obligation bond bill, we work with the Starkville delegation, Representative Rob Roberson, Representative Tyrone Ellis, and Representative Jeff Smith, who happens to be from this Golden Triangle area, and is chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, work very closely with us. Senator Joey Phillington is the Senate Finance Chairman, and that is where the money would have come from, for the, um, bond bill, the general obligation bond bill. We put in a request, and of course, you know, we came into the legislative session late for Starkville, a good portion of that had been, those decisions had been made prior[1758.83] A good portion of that had been, those decisions had been made prior to us coming on board for Starkville. We worked really hard to try and make last-minute requests to get $2.4 million to pay for the Starkville, a portion of the Starkville Police Department. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that. We will continue to work on that. I know later on in your meeting, you're gonna talk about some bids for the Starkville Police Department. And so if given the opportunity, we will go back to the legislature in 2017 and request as much of that and hopefully get as much of that as possible. The final slide that I want to discuss, and then Elliot is going to take over. He doesn't talk nearly as fast as I am, but I wanted to make sure he had plenty of time to get all of his information in. Is House Bill 1647, the Department of Archives and History Appropriation Bill. What we tried to do was to get into their language for their Community Heritage Preservation Grant. But again, we came in so late to the process that we were not able to do that. We worked very closely with the appropriations chairman Buck Clark, who is a Bulldog, and Representative Herb Fireshin, who is also a Bulldog. We thought those connections would help us and they wanted to help Starkville. But because of the dire situation that the state's budget was in, they were not able to help this year. Katie Blunt at the Department of Archives and History thought it was a worthy project and we were hopeful that we would be able to do that, but we were not. I'm going to stop and we will take questions at your convenience afterwards. Let Elliot talk.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Again, I'm Elliot Flags. And I'm gonna touch on six different projects that we've been working on for the City of Starkville, starting with the FEMA firefighter grants. There are two that the city applied for. The first one, the Safer Grant, is to hire six personnel at one of the understaffed fire departments here, as I'm sure you're all aware. And the second is the Assistance for Firefighters Grant, which is for some specific pieces of equipment, I believe, a complete air refuel system and the gas mask. We were able to obtain a letter of support from Senator Thad Cochran, again, a contact with Mandy Maxwell from Congressman Greg Harper's office, who represents this district. And also our Commissioner of Insurance, who happens to be from the same hometown as me, Vicksburg, Mike Cheney. He was more than happy to write a letter of recommendation or a letter of support for the City of Starkville. All three of these letters were sent to FEMA, to their division in Washington, DC. The next project is the Environmental Remediation Project that you all are working on.
Just one question on the previous slide. Will we find out the status of that firefighter?
No one knows except everyone in FEMA. They don't disclose the information. So there's no way for us to find out when.
There's not a deadline for announcement on that?
I don't believe so. I don't think they give a particular date that they'll drop the announcement. But when they do, we will be notified.
There's a deadline for applying, but not for the announcement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The Environmental Remediation Project, we've been looking at some state funding. And also on the next slide, there'll be some federal funding that's possibly available. Here in Mississippi, under the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, there's the Corrective and Trust Fund. The current, the city is currently looking to see if this project will qualify. I'm just about sure that it will. My contacts at MDQ or Trey Hess, and the person that's actually over the grant who I've been in contact with is Mark Williams. And the entity that owns this land will have to apply for the grant. At the federal level, we have the Environmental Protection Agency. We have the Brownfields Grants. There are about six or seven grants that fall within this particular subject. The first is just a definition of a Brownfield for those who are not familiar. The one that the city has already applied for but was denied last year was the cleanup grant. Four different cities in Mississippi received the grant, I believe Vicksburg, Jackson City, I believe Gulfport and one more. But I've been talking with the mayor and we believe that who apply again will also contact the US Senator's Office and also the Congressman's Office. And also the Governor's Office to get their support for this grant, for this project. The bottom one is the Superfund. I'm not sure if you're familiar. What this does is if it qualifies, which I'm just about sure that this project doesn't, is you'll have a project. And when you go to the site, it has to be hazardous to people or it has to be hazardous within itself or contain pollutants. To my knowledge, the site behind the Thad Cochran Research Park that they're trying to expand is not as hazardous material. The next project is the Old Army Reserve Building. Our contact is Senator Thad Cochran's office. Adam Till, who's his deputy chief of staff, and Todd Mayberry. There is no specific timetable that Congress will touch this legislation or get back to it. It's in the Armed Services Committee. They'll be, where they'll have to put the language in, but they have not gotten to the land swap legislation yet, but they will inform us when they get to it. The Industrial Park Natural Gas Expansion Project, there will be a huge project for the Golden Triangle area. Atmos will be the entity providing the natural gas line. Bob Curley is the contact there. On May 17th, the mayor, myself and Mr. Curley won a conference call. And since then, and even prior to, they've gotten Public Service Commissioner Brandon Presley on board. And have had different meetings since May 7th on this project. The last project is the Starkville Rails to Trails Program. Currently Kansas City Southern owns the railway. Reed Branson is KCS's lobbyist at the Capitol and a good friend. Kevin McIntosh is the person that the mayor has been in contact with. I can honestly say that they're being very stubborn with this project. They do not plan to abandon this line anytime soon, if ever. And at this point, what we're trying to do is open up a lot of communication again with them and present the project to them again to get their approval. They're very stubborn. I don't know what the results of this may be, but we're in contact with them.
And we will continue to work with the Mississippi Railroad Association as well. As they do these in other communities, we want to make sure that Starkville is still on the list as they consider this.
That's the last slide. I hope I didn't go over.
Y'all made it under ten.
We made it.
It was on my fastback.
All right, I'm gonna make a few comments prior to opening the floor for comments. And that is to say, first of all, thank you. I guess we've been at this for, we're coming up on six months now. And I think you've been doing an excellent job for us. You know, obviously it was a disappointment as our big ask in the legislative session this year was funding for the police stations. But I can honestly say that I was the one that was in contact with you on a daily basis, that there's nothing more you could have done. Your expertise was invaluable and you worked very, very hard in the legislative session. Ultimately, you don't control outcomes. And I was very pleased with the effort that we had. I thought it was well-presented and I was glad that you were on our side. And I will say that up until literally the 11th hour of bond bill negotiations, we thought we were in the bill, but that's the way it goes sometimes. Now, some of the work that you've been doing since the legislative session, I feel we need to add a little bit. Because I think you might have undersold how valuable you've been. You may not even realize how valuable you've been on some of these projects. Particularly with respect to the natural gas project. But as Mr. Higgins from the link alluded to at the last meeting, we've had some major movement on the natural gas extension to the industrial park. That was all started by Cornerstone Government Affairs. We were fortunate that they have a client relationship with Atmos Energy as well. And Elliot was able to get me and Mr. Curley, a representative from Atmos, together. And start the process of figuring out what steps we could take to begin to get the gas line extension to the park. And the fact that that is now before the Public Service Commission, and we're on the timeline where we think 12 months from now, we'll be in a position where we'll be within six months of getting gas to the site, which is critical for the industrial site. Really is much, much further than we ever expected to be at this point. And I don't think those conversations ever would have started if you hadn't set up that initial meeting for us. Also, the Thad Cochran Environmental Remediation Project. Our Brownfields consultant, who came in on our assessment grant that we got three years ago, John Horgreaves, has actually reviewed the information you sent about the landfill trust fund. He thinks it's a perfect fit. And my experience with John is John is very conservative in evaluating grant opportunities for us because he has so much experience with typically EPA programs. So my understanding of that program is that it will fund up to $2 million of cleanup. And we've got a $2.4 million project, so that's the most solid lead we've had in some time on that project. And it's a significant project for us because that is the next phase of development for the research park. And of course, the first phase of development for the research park could not have been more successful. And that's the reason we have no more lots to develop in the research park. So the quicker we're able to find a way to clean up the brownfield, the quicker we'll be able to add additional sites to the research park. And I've also been pleased with your work on the firefighter grants, as well as the Old Army Reserve Building. You know, those are two, as you mentioned, that don't have a definite timeline. But I have no doubt that you will continue to work on it and keep us abreast of your progress. That being said, after close to six months of observing both the competency of your team and your diligence in pursuing the tasks that I ask you to pursue, you've performed very, very well. Thank you for your service. Mayor?
Thank you.
Alderman Carver, then, ma'am?
I'm gonna be on the other end of the spectrum. I voted against you guys because I guess it's the first time I've ever met y'all. And I called y'all the Ghost Consulting Firm, even though you had a website. To me, you weren't personal. Just letting you know that. Second thing is, in my opinion, you know, I'm a return on investment kind of guy and I didn't see any grants landed this year and I didn't see any additional funding brought into the city. I might completely be on the other side if you land or help to land the natural gas issue or crisis that we have here. But so far, I look at more like, I think it's $4,300 a month we pay y'all. And then we've got issues. We're trying to fund a city police station. We're gonna get into that tonight. We're trying to fund a host of things around here, potholes, sidewalks, everything that goes with growing the city. But that's money that could be used elsewhere. So I'd say I would wish you the best of luck. I voted against you the first time at this point. Without any, having landed anything, there's nothing that we're seeing any return on investment. I've heard good things about you personally, as far as your lobbying abilities, and I would like to see you use that for the city, you know, and I know you will. But how did that affect us coming late into the session? I mean, was this something that we were just dead in the water? Because I voted against the police station, first of all. And so we were told that y'all, more than likely, were gonna land the $2.4 million part of that funding mechanism and it didn't. And I guess that's what you're just talking to, but.
Now, to be clear, I never said it was more than likely that they were gonna land the funding. I said that's beyond our control.
Yeah. And that's what's happening tonight is because of that lack of funding, we're gonna have to probably raise taxes again or something to figure out the police station. We've got police officers all over town with no house for them. So I guess I'll say that, were we dead in the water this year and just coming in that late into session when your contract was approved? Or is this something that you see more production next session?
I definitely see it as being more productive next legislative session. A great portion of it was just the state of our fiscal affairs and the state of Mississippi. We have a lieutenant governor who only wants to bond a certain portion of the revenue that's coming in into Mississippi that he can pay off the bonded indebtedness of the state. And he had a cap on what he could accept for the bond bill, this legislative session. And when I mean coming late into the game, I think our contract was approved maybe in February or so. And a lot of legislative work is done in October, November and December, leading up to the legislative session. So we came in, we were behind and we are really, really good and we work really, really hard. There's no one who's gonna tell you that they work any harder at the Capitol. Even our competitors will tell you that. We're there all day, every day, even until late at night. But we did absolutely everything that we possibly could. We were told by several members of the lieutenant governor staff that he had accepted our project. And until the very last moment, we thought that we were in there. We did not know at the time if we would get the $2.4, but they told us that we would get something. By something, usually it's 750,000 and above. We were hopeful that we would get that and we were pretty confident that we would.
Thank you.
Alderman, ma'am?
Good evening, Ms. Young and Mr. Flags. I'm one of three Aldermen that did not support you all. You all didn't come here, didn't see you. At the request of the mayor, four Aldermen supported you all. I've always been offended that you all didn't come here, do any kind of presentation, but you all went to see our county's Board of Supervisors, who had been warned against you all and who failed to support you all. Our state legislatures, there are some problems. And certainly you all have spoken about this and you agree. I just returned from the coast and I wish that you and Mr. Flags had been in the meeting where our AG, as well as our Secretary of State, Gilbert Hosen, addressed us. And it's rare that you would find our Attorney General, who's a Democrat, and our Secretary of State, who's a Republican, on the same page. I wish that so many people could have been able to hear that. I already knew some of the things going in and then I learned about additional things. There was never a chance that we were ever gonna get $2.4 million from our state legislatures for our city. See, if they give the City of Starkville, Columbus wanting in on the goods, Meridian wanting in on the goods, Jackson wanting in on the goods. All municipalities have issues. So I never believed that we were gonna get that money and thus far, we haven't gotten a dime. Our payment of the June's docket for you all was 12,000 and something odd dollars. We haven't gotten anything on our return. To think that the state legislature is about to do anything for the City of Starkville with all that they got going on. As board members, we would have to sit here and denial. I'm gonna tell you about something in just a minute. I'm gonna bring the chief in. They've taken monies from the injured fireman compensation fund. They've taken money from children's with special needs. Did not fully fund our education here in the state of Mississippi. And you think that they're gonna give the City of Starkville a penny? They aren't. As a matter of fact, they've actually cost us here in our city. I contacted chief about two weeks ago when I discovered something and was shocked at what the state legislatures had cost the City of Starkville's law enforcement. And others around the state. There were five of them listed. I noticed that you all didn't say anything about that. Chief Nichols, will you please come forward? Chief Nichols, I think that probably some members of the board may be unaware of this. Will you tell us what the state legislatures have done and at a cost to your department here in the City of Starkville?
Okay, they haven't done it. Okay, it's projected that they was gonna do it. They passed a House bill where they could possibly take monies that we accrued in our wireless fund that we get from the courts for assessing its own misdemeanor citations. And we had over $260,000 in there. And, you know, we'll say that they was gonna take it July 1st. But they hadn't taken it. And we have gotten permission to use those monies.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, the total of that is a little bit more than $272,000 that right now, we don't have access to using. Okay, thank you so much, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, Ms. Young and Mr. Flags, I wish you well with the work that you'll do on our city, but I'll be honest with you, I have some concerns. We're busy making payments. And again, I did not support you all. It's that $30,000 and we're not seeing a return on anything. Hopefully something will come. And I'm optimistic. If you believe that you can do something, I will sit here and apologize and say thank you for the work that you've done for our city. But I wish that our board had been like the Board of Supervisors here and not hired you all. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Can we respond to that, Mayor?
You may, but I've got one comment I want to make before I recognize you. And that is just, for the record, there were over 40 cities this year that received direct appropriations from the bond bill. Actually, one of the issues that we haven't touched on, that per our prospects, is they considered the fact that our school district and Mississippi State University got one of the largest appropriations from the bond bill as that our community had already received quite a bit with the $5 million. So I say that only to say, we would be selling ourselves short in the future if we did not continue to ask for earmarks and the appropriations in the bond bill. Because Alderman, when the trend you alluded to is already happening, cities are getting funding each and every year from the bond bill. And we need to put forth a good effort.
Mayor, yeah, I agree with you.
Hold on, Ms. Young, and then I recognize Alderman, ma'am.
I just wanted to respond to just a few of those things. First of all, I'm sorry that you are offended that we did not come. We came to the Oktobah County Board of Supervisors at the invitation of the president of the board. So I apologize that we did not come and speak to you.
Thank you.
And also I want to say that the Board of Supervisors never took a vote on us. We came and made a presentation and talked to them. It wasn't that they turned us down. They never even took a vote. So I wanted to put that out there. Now, as far as other cities not getting any money, you never get if you don't ask. And not every city asks, therefore they don't get some things. But the cities that do ask, some get and some don't. Our history can show you what we've done in the past for other cities. And I also can tell you, it doesn't happen immediately in the legislature. You always have to get in and get your feet wet in the legislative process, in the lobbying process, and then you start to see some return on your investment. I can tell you, for example, several years ago, when we represented Natchez, the first year, I think we got maybe $15,000, which is nothing being in a.
which is nothing being in a 5 billion dollar budget. But the next year, we got 1 million dollars to pay four city streets, leading up to some of their gaming facilities, and we kept getting things for the city of Natchez. So it takes a little time. I cannot guarantee to you that you will get some of the things that we've talked about. I can tell you, we will do our dead level best to accomplish those things. And I can tell you also, that hopefully, the state of our fiscal affairs in the state of Mississippi will be better, and that will make it a lot easier to have some of the appropriations and some of the bonds. But as far as there never being a chance for us to receive those funds, I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with you. There were cities who did request some things, and they got some of those things, and some of them got their full amounts requested. So I'd have to respectfully disagree that we never would have gotten that.
All right. Prior to recognizing Alderman Lynn, I will also say, since it's been a point of discussion, the main reason they weren't here when we presented their contract is I did not ask them to come to the meeting, you know. So if you wanna fault somebody for that, for that, fault me, you know. They didn't turn down a request. I didn't make the request. Alderman Lynn.
Let me say this. Thank you for the work that you'll do on behalf of our city. Hopefully, you all are laying something. We didn't get Brownsville this year. That went to Greenwood and went to Yazoo. As a matter of fact, the day that that announcement was made, I was at a lunch meeting with someone, and he got the telephone call that the city of Starkville did not receive the money. That saddened me, because I, we had created all kind of relationships with the people that can make those decisions, myself and the city engineer, and our community development director. We didn't get a penny, not one penny. So it has been disheartening that other municipalities, that may not have hired anyone to lobby on their behalf, are receiving monies, but we're not getting anything. 30,000 dollars is just a lot of money with the situation that we're in, and we don't even have any home to put our police officers tonight. So 30,000 dollars, it's a lot of money. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Flags.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly add that, you know, our firm, we do represent the city of Starkville, and so I know during session, I would send those monthly action reports.
You do.
It has my cellphone number, so not only do I report to the mayor, but I report to each and every one of you. So feel free to call me on my cellphone during session if we happen to renew a contract, or even to the end of this contract. Feel free to call me about any project, any issue that the city may have, and we'll be glad to handle it.
And Mr. Flags, let me say this, and I'm gonna yield the floor. I'm very optimistic, but our state is expecting a deficit next year. I just don't see 1.7 billion dollars. I just don't see them being able to help many people.
1.7 billion?
Yeah. 1.7 billion is what they're expecting next year. That was stated in Jackson. We'll see. Thank you. You're open.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time and attention.
The next matter before you is the discussion and consideration of rejecting all bids and authorizing re-advertisements for bids with changes in scope of work with the advising instead of chief of police and project architect to request a cost estimate, and to request a cost estimate for building a new facility to be presented by the project architect at such time as new bids for the renovation project are received.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Hold on one second. I'm gonna summarize the process before I open the floor. So on Thursday, we opened bids for the police renovation project. The low bid that we received had a base bid of 6.3 million dollars. The high bid had a base bid of 6.7 million dollars. Both of those bids exceeded our project budget by over 1.7 million dollars. By law, if those bids are over 10% of the project budget, we cannot negotiate those bids. And as you have heard, those bids are well over 10% over the project budget. So at this point, my recommendation to you is to allow the architect to work with the chief of police on making any programmatic changes that the architect feels after doing a debriefing with the bidders that did bid on the project and meeting with his team could lower the price of the overall project to something that is within budget. And furthermore, the chief and his command staff agree will still provide the long-term facility that we need to meet the needs of our police force. The timeline that the architect's laid out for you is the quickest timeline that we can possibly achieve to get through another bidding process. That would allow for a very short, compressed redesign period over the next couple of weeks, and would have bids back in hand, I believe by August the 10th, in time for the August the 16th meeting. I would also recommend, at such time, have the architect come in and present cost estimates for what a new build would be, so you'll have that for comparison purposes at that meeting. Alderman Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, could you, I know you took the news Thursday about the disparity in the estimates that came back of the bids. Have you had a chance at all to look to see where you may be able to cut within the department?
I have taken a look at that, and I've spoken with Mr. Schaefer as well. I don't see anywhere I can cut operationally that would be significant enough to cut 2 million dollars off, so there's nowhere.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
City attorney, am I correct that we've been under contract with Schaefer and Associates since 2004?
That's correct.
More specific, January 6th of 2004?
That's correct.
And it's my understanding that that's four, I guess, four boards ago, if I'm doing my math right. Mr. Schaefer, I would think would be more than familiar with the building facilities and the needs of renovation, because I think he's been drawing plans for several years now on the possibility and the options of renovating that building. Early on, I was supportive of spending up to 3 million dollars in that old city hall. We've all been there, and we all know what the condition of the building. I don't even think we got a bid, if my memory serves me right, when we offered it up for auction a couple years ago. Is that right?
Did we try to sell the property?
No. So that speaks volumes right there, and we're gonna put in, and I voted against putting in more than 3 million a few weeks ago, and the board voted to go 5.4. And now we've got bids well above that. I personally lost confidence in Mr. Schaefer. I know an estimate's an estimate. A lot of it's market timing. The price of steel just went up, and, you know, I'm not sure how much steel we're gonna put in there. You know, we're using the foundation wall, existing walls, but that's not a near miss. That's a huge miss. And I have to question moving forward, continuing his services. We have to ask ourselves, as a board, what's the tipping point? You know, how much do we wanna put in that old building versus going down and just starting new construction? And I know, you know, we've talked about it worth the gold, and we've been trying for 25 years to get a new PD, but is this the right decision? And I've been questioning that more and more as we keep hitting more hurdles. I told the chief, it feels like, you know, the PD's been snake-bitten over this project. And I'm gonna offer a motion, Mr. Mayor. I move to terminate the contract for architectural services with Schaefer and Associates for renovation of the old city hall for the Starkville Police Department, and all other phases and descriptions of the project dating back to January 6th, 2004, when the contract was first entered into pursuant to section 1.3, 0.8, 0.5 of the contract. I'm not sure how my counterparts are gonna vote on this, but I wanted to be on the record and move this forward.
Motion's been made. It's been reduced to writing.
And I asked for roll call also.
Presenting that writing to the city clerk without objection. I will not ask for it to be reread. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Alderman Lynn, Alderman Little, you wish to speak on the merits.
Yes, sir.
All right, before opening the floor to the board, let me talk a little bit about what I see as the consequence of this action was taken. You know, I see your real inflection point as considering whether this is something you want to do as being if we do not receive a bid that is within budget on the next advertisement. And here's why. If you do this right now, under that contract, this project is effectively dead. We do not have access to Mr. Schaefer's work if you terminate the contract before the contract is complete. That means we can't go forward with a re-advertising on the project. And the net effect of that is, you've already spent 223,000 dollars on it. That 223,000 dollars is supposed to be paid when you issue bonds on the project. So in that event, I would recommend, if you go down that route, that you go ahead and issue, well, probably between 220 and 250,000 dollars of the bonds you've already authorized, just to pay for the design work that we've already done on it, because our budget can't absorb that. It was supposed to come from the bonds. In addition to that, we've got police now moved out of that entire facility. Now, they would ultimately be up to the police chief, but I don't see any way we continue without moving them back into that facility, because you're gonna set us on a timeline that's two to three years away from a completed construction project at that point. Right now, we're on a nine to 12-month timeline if we get budget, if we get a bid that's within budget to do the renovation project. If you start now, you would start with site selection. That's a process, being as, recognizing that we've gotta go as fast as we can. I don't see you completing that process before two to four months. And after you've completed that process, then you've got a minimum eight-month period to do not only schematic design, but then to go through a full design on a building. And if you start with full design, again, full design is where you start incurring major expenses that get in the six-figure range. So essentially, you're gonna pay the same 250,000 dollars out for the design of that new facility over that period. Now, remember, this is a renovated construction project, so it's on a nine to 12-month timeline. If you do a new construction project, you're going to be on an 18 to 24-month timeline to complete the new construction project. So by the time you add all those events up, you know, the best-case scenario is somewhere between two and three years. And I just don't see police being able to continue in the satellite locations where they are for the next two to three years. So what I would recommend doing is, I would recommend go through the re-advertising process. It only takes a month for you to do this. You know, we have come this far in the process. The horse on this project left the barn a long time ago. See if you get a bid that is within budget, that can meet the needs of police, and chief can say, yes, this design meets the needs of what we're looking for, and we can say, yes, this meets the project budget. You know, if that's the case, we lost a month, but we keep on going. If that is not the case at that point in time, in my opinion, that will be the time where you start considering actions such as this. But I think it's premature to kill the project at this stage in the game. I've got Little and Carver.
I recognize, Mayor. It's not ideal, and it does push us back. I would love to hear from other board members, see what their suggestions or ideas moving forward are, because I just, I just don't know. This is time to cut bait on this project over there. We're just getting in too deep. And I recognize and I appreciate your thoughts on that. Should we continue and just take the easy way, if we feel like that's the easiest path? Are we getting signals that this may not be the route we need to go, Mr. Alderman? I don't know. How do you look at that?
One other thing I neglected to mention that is relevant is, and Mr. Schaefer, I'm gonna ask you to make sure I'm right on this. Mr. Schaefer, since the project did not come in within 10% of the project budget, is obligated to do all the work leading up to re-advertising, which is probably high four figures, low five figures worth of work, at no cost to the city. So we truly are at a point where we risk nothing by going forward and re-advertising and seeing if we do better again. But we are certainly giving up a lot if we end at that point. Mr. Schaefer, am I correct in stating your opinion? All right, I've got Carver next.
Guess we're gonna have to back out. I got the luxury now to sit up here and say that, you know, with this city hall and the police station, I voted against these things. I find it ironic that we used to sit in the old city hall, and you'd get there, and the fans would be on, and the sewers were backing up, and the water's coming in from the ceilings, and we stumped against that building of how awful and how terrible it was. And now, we're trying to defend it and put our police force of all, of all of our agencies back in there. What happened was, this city hall, after multiple referendums, and the public didn't want it, this city hall was pushed through by the mayor and the previous board. I voted against that as well. I think that this, and I've quoted before, I thought it was Taj Mahal. I think it was one of the only cliffs in Oktibah County, and we decided to build a government building on top of it. I think it's a poor design. It looks good, but I just don't think long-term, I think we could've come out and done something more economically feasible. Years down the road, when we get to the police discussion, our pockets are a little bit fatter, and we can afford to do more than what we can do right now. Where do we go from here? It's basically, you know, the lesser of two evils. And what point do you continue? I guess my question today, or last Thursday and Friday, and the mayor called me, and I said, what is the gross underestimate, underestimation of this? And we're not talking about 100,000. We're talking, you know, a million, million and a half, 2 million dollars. And what in the construction field, who and where keeps messing up? Because it continues to be a problem when, I laughed when it was 1.3 million dollars. I felt like that was a placeholder. I said 6 or 7 million. And I know nothing about construction of a municipal building. I said it was 6 or 7 from the start. And they said, well, we got this 2 and 1/2 from the state, and it's only gonna cost us 3. I laughed at that, and here we are. And again, I said, if we're getting into that kind of money, let's just build new. I think opportunities like cornerstone out there, we're trying to find a way to promote the west side of bypass. My personal opinion is still, look for a donated land source. Again and again, we lose these. We had an opportunity to get, before I moved to Starkville, I think it used to be a Walmart, which was the bowling alley. I think that was probably the goldmine that we missed. But getting to this point now, what got us here, and how do we solve it? My solution, the cheapest way to build new would be, since the police force does have a presence here, and chief, sorry you had to get dragged into this, but has made a, no, you don't have to get up. I'm just saying, you know, friend to friend, I told you, you know, I think it's a poor position for you to have to be in with, through this. But we've still gotta solve the problem. My solution would be, build a more economical, get some square footage. You're looking for 29,000 square feet. Put whatever's up here on the upper floor, maintain that as a substation, where if somebody has to do something without transportation of prisoners or something, just everyday office-type things, they can come to city hall, they can come in here, see all the, you know, the department heads, see all the workers. They can do that kind of thing. But as far as transporting prisoners, why are we putting them downtown across from a daycare? I still have issues with that. I thought the location was poor down there. I think it has minimal parking. I think we're in the 25 to 28 spots. I think to make it safe for prisoners, we're gonna try to put up some kind of a six or eight-foot wall out there. I don't think it's really what I would consider ADA accessible. Much easier to just build on flat land somewhere and put a cheaper building in there. Doesn't have to be anything eloquent. It can be something, in cornerstone would be an ideal place to put something, or somewhere like that. Maybe somebody would donate some land. Maybe we can get a decent land deal somewhere. But again, it's, I guess the base question I had to ask myself in writing these notes is, do I want the police station in a building that we lobbied against? No, and I don't. I just, I still don't think that's a good location. I've never thought it was a good location. And I guess, I just, people ask me on the street, well, what would you do with the old city hall? What would you do with the police station as it sits now? And, you know, because it's on the National Register of Historic Places, I guess we haven't had the opportunity to really get a buyer, prospective buyer, on it yet. I would put it out for sale. If that didn't work, I would turn it and probably use it as just a blanket big storage building, where you can put evidence. You can put, I know we've got stacks of bicycles, cars that may be towed, things like that. That's what it was originally used for. I hear stories of it being tanks in a lot of Army. It's a pretty large facility, once you gut it out from the steps in, and just use it as a cheap storage option, something if it doesn't sell. If we put it back out there, and especially the businessmen of this town, and the businessmen of the state deem that it's not a necessary and a prospective buy, I don't think the city needs, you know, retain that as well. I think politically, they gotta back up a few years, and what the previous board and the mayor did has got us to a situation now that we're spinning for wheels. We're spinning our wheels, trying to find a way to fund a situation that probably isn't gonna be economical at the end of the day regardless. So it's kind of a lesser of two evils, and what are you gonna do? I don't know. It's gonna be interesting to see what goes on from here, because in the meantime, there wasn't even proper planning made as to where our police department was gonna go. I think that two, two to three meetings ago, when this was voted through, this last option, when it would jump from 3 to 5.4 million, maybe they didn't think the votes were there that night, but all of a sudden, we're scrambling the next board meeting in two to find a place to put them. We put ourselves into a political fiasco, with I'm having, personally having to get up and meet a crew in the morning. up and meet a crew in the morning at 6:00 o'clock. We're meeting into 10, 11:00 o'clock at night without a consent agenda. And what that does is leaves a couple of us that have, have to go and have early morning jobs to go do that, and then leaves the rest of the board making decisions more or less behind our back. So it's put us into a political fiasco. Should we all work together? Of course, we should. The situation with Cornerstone is kind of ironic that y'all are here as well because that could have been a situation, if we got that money, it would have been a whole different ballgame tonight. But we'll see where we go from here. But as far as, as an alternative, I think, I still think we need to build new. If we're going to start getting, if it's going to cost six, seven, eight million dollars, I bet my paycheck that if we reopen bids in a month, there's going to be no different than what it is. We've got a couple of developers in here, and I don't see construction costs going down within a month. I see them going up. So whatever you get between two private sector construction firms is probably what you're going to get in another month. So I yield the floor.
Alden Little.
I have a question for Mr. Schaefer. How many police stations have you designed over your career?
For you?
Okay. How many for any other municipality?
None.
None?
No.
None? Have you designed any other municipal buildings at all other than a police department for any other municipalities in the state?
Well, I practice for 42 years, up to 600 buildings. I feel confident with yes in this.
But the answer was yes or no as far as municipalities?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alden White.
Okay. Mayor, members of the board, I sit here sad tonight. There are a total of eight elected officials for the city of Starkville, and all of us sit before you. When we took office in July of 2013, we knew about this problem that we would have. And that problem is, is that our police department would need to have somewhere to go. We knew that we would be exiting city hall, coming into a new building, and leaving our police in a building that has asbestos, it has plumbing problems, and there are electrical problems. But tonight, we're sitting here having this conversation, and our terms are about over. Now, I'm only one member of the board, and I recognized all of this a long time ago that we were going to have problems. But again, I'm only one person. Here it is, 2016, and we knew about all of this in 2013, and we're sitting here and just started to have conversations about eight months ago about Mr. Schaefer and the design, this, that, and the other. It is sad and unfortunate. Mr. Schaefer came before us, said that he could get it built for 5.4 million dollars. The vice mayor brought a measure for it to raise the mileage. I raised my hand because at that night and that time, I listened to Mr. Schaefer say that we could build it for 5.4. He told our chief that we could possibly have some money left over. I arrived from the coast on Thursday, and I get a telephone call from the mayor on Friday, and he is in complete distress. Complete distress. I could tell it in his voice when he called me because he knew that this was embarrassing, and it is. It's embarrassing for our city. Our officers are all over town. If you came to visit our city today from Chicago and you asked somebody on the street, where's the police department, they say, I don't know. They're all over town. Well, we're all over town. They probably couldn't tell you. It is embarrassing and unfortunate at the amazing talent that we have on this board, but yet, we sit here tonight looking like this before the public. The optics of this is terrible. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Before this ship sails, do you think we should give another shot at bidding?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Mayor, may I ask chief one question? Do you make sure we're clear?
Chief, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure I understand. Now, the mayor just asked you, make sure we're all clear. You heard the saying at church, all hearts and minds clear. We need to have all hearts and minds clear. The mayor just asked you, should we, the mayor and board of Alderman, give it another shot? And I'm going to ask you that same question, Mr. Honorable Police Chief. In your opinion, based on your total knowledge and familiarity with where we are, am I correct that it is your opinion that there is nothing, I mean, nothing, that can be changed with the current scope of work for the police department to be housed in the old city hall? Is that yes or no? Is that question clear to you? Or you may say it again?
I think you asked me two questions.
No, I don't want to confuse you. I want you to tell this mayor and board, is there anything that can be changed in any way, form, or fashion with the current scope of work that you would be satisfied with to accommodate the Stark Police Department? And your answer is going to depend on what I've got to follow up question.
The answer to that is no, not to my knowledge.
Mayor, just all due respect, that's a different response.
And here's what I would say to that. Since the bid opening, the architect and the police chief have not had an opportunity to sit down in detail and go over what the architect thinks might could be cut. I will tell you, I've had conversations with both of the bidders, and both of them represented that there are substantial savings in materials that would not change the floor plan to the building. Now, how in-depth those go and what those changes mean, I don't know, and neither does the chief because they haven't had that conversation. I would ask at a minimum, you give them a week to have that conversation. Let the architect lay out there what the options are, and let the police chief say in all honesty, yes, I can live with this, or no, I cannot live with this, rather than making an uninformed decision tonight where we just say, it's awful, and we're past the point of no return. You want?
Chief Nichols, let me say this. I've been supportive of the PD in every way that I can. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I was the alderman that met with you, discovered that we would not have a place to even, you all would be displaced during the renovations of that building, worked with you every way that I could to find somewhere, did that. But chief, you don't want to shortcut your building, and your name is going to be on that cornerstone for years to come. You don't want to do that, and I'm not preaching to you. I don't want what could possibly happen to that building, and I look at this building that we're in now. The design is kind of strange. Came in one month. Somebody called me and said, the roof is leaking. I said, send me a picture. Got that. You don't want a building that's flawed. You want perfection. The taxpayers of the city of Starkville demand a perfect building that will be home to the police department, that will bear your name on there, that you will have sit at the meetings with the architect and created the plan for it. For me, at this point, and I'm going to take you out of it, I don't have any confidence in architect Gary Schaefer anymore. He stood before us and told us that he could get the building built for 5.4 million dollars. The vice mayor bring a mileage increase. I raised my hand based on that statement alone that he made, but the bids come back, and they are far over that amount. At this stage and point, whatever the bids may be when they come, if they are over, I cannot, will not, and raise my hand for another penny for the police department. My constituents have already expressed concerns. I can't do it, but I wish us the best as we go forward.
Can I say something?
You may.
Okay, from a standpoint of a department head, I have over 70-some personnel I have to make decisions for.
Mm-hmm.
My decision is based on them. We are displaced right now.
Yes.
We can't do two years displaced like we are operationally. We're jeopardizing the safety of this city.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have anything to lose right now. Okay? By going forward again with this, I have nothing to lose. By waiting three more years, I have nothing to lose. I mean, we have nothing right now. We have absolutely nothing. And my guys, my morale and my department, I'm trying to keep it up. The worst thing that can happen to us is to move back in that building. That's what I don't want to put my people through. And then I still got to try to hold on to these people when they can go to another department and make more money. I have to look at all these things. That's what my decision is based on.
And it's one month. One month if we go all the way to getting new bids at a minimum a week before you make this decision. Just give them a week to sit down and let the chief come back in knowing everything about the project and say, yes, I want this, or no, I don't want this.
I'd be fine with that, but with the understanding, if this, if you're not able to cut and make substantial cuts, which looks like nobody wants to bid on that project. Nobody wants to get, that's going to be a pretty tough job running that old building. We've got two bids. How many people picked up packets, bid packets? 10? And we got two?
And I see, I see your standpoint. You guys have your job to do, but I'm giving you my opinion based off my professionalism in this profession as a police chief.
And given that, chief, I would be willing to wait a couple of weeks and see, you know, to the recess meetings. That give ample time. We need a full 30 days.
We probably need to, if you want to stay on the timeline where we could get bids back in time for the August 16th meetings, we probably need to special call it as soon as the chief's got an answer and determine whether we want to re-advertise.
I'm fine with that, Mayor.
Alden Carver.
And looking for a way to balance the book, how many square feet are up here that is available on this floor, and long-term, can the police maintain a presence in it?
I think that's 2,300 up there.
So if you were to shave, you're looking for 29,000 square feet?
Yes, sir.
You know, and of that, if you were to maintain a permanent present up here, presence up here, maybe your administrative officers up here, look at that option as well. I don't even know how the board feels about that as a whole and how that, how you feel about that, but...
The primary goal of any police department is to all be in the same building, to operate from the same building.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
As far as, so your substations have no operations in them whatsoever?
Yeah, but they're, they're not manned 24 hours. We can go there. We can respond there to meet our citizens there on patrol. They stop in there. They take reports.
So you're against if you have free space up here and you don't want to use that, you'd rather use them and keep them?
I'm against that because I don't need administrative staff over here and I'm over there.
Yeah.
That's what we got going on right now, and it's just...
It's not the way it's designed to be?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hold on. I've got Maynard has been trying for a while to get recognized.
I'd like to withdraw my motion, if possible.
All right, without objection, motion has been withdrawn. Alden Maynard.
Chief, I voted to go into the building with 5.4. I was like Alderman Little. I think I hit the top realm of my comfort with that amount of money going in there.
Yes, sir.
I lean more to Alderman Carver in thinking if we've got to spend more than that, we might as well spend what we need to spend and build a new building.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's, that's sort of where I stand right now on this, this whole issue is, I want to do what's right for, for you and your, and your staff, but I don't want to chase good money after bad. And if we're going to spend more than we've already budgeted, then I would say spend a little more and build new somewhere. That's my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say very briefly, just a couple times I'm going to speak tonight and one other time later in the meeting here. Let me say very clearly to the, to the members of the public that I fully concur with my colleagues from two and three that, given all the totality of the facts and the circumstances, that I'm ready to support this motion to terminate this architect tonight effectively immediately. But I'm going to yield to the mayor and see what we get back. And I've been at this project from the point of inception, from day one, and this, make a long story short, $2 million is way off the mark. I mean, I can make these decisions. I'm ready to do the roll call and send them to the house tonight, but that's not what the motion before was. I had to say that, and this is no disrespect, and of course, the public is aware of why I did that. I asked the architect pointedly about the dollar amount. But without getting involved with that, let me say that, Mr. Chief, we do not, let me say, I want to speak for no one. The vice mayor does not want you to compromise your, your facility. This facility is not just for you, it's for the city of Starkville. We've been at this discussion for roughly two decades, if not more now, and we need to have a very first-class facility. Do not compromise the integrity and the structure of this building just to come back and say you got something at 5.4 million. But I have thought about this long and hard, Mr. Chief. If this building comes back in the range where it is now, I certainly would like to see a cost comparison. And I'll just be flat honest with you right now, chief. If this price come back at $7 million, at $7 million or thereabout, or 6.5, or even the six-range, and we can build this building for, in the range of $9 million thereabout, I'm going to tell you tonight, so you can take it to the house, I'm going to vote for a new building. I'm going to vote for a new building. And the reason that I voted, like the lady from Tuesday said a few minutes ago, the reason I voted for this last time is because we got more than one assurance from our higher professional that we could build this building for 5.4 million dollars and not a penny more. That's what we were told. Don't you remember that, chief?
Yes, sir, I do.
Now, now, chief, I'm fixing to make this motion, but please do not compromise this. This is building, I'm sure we all want to happen, but if this building is more than 5.4 million coming back...
Yes, sir.
I'm going to want a cost comparison, and this motion is going to contain a cost comparison. And I want you to have full input as this board approve this motion tonight for a cost comparison. You want you to sit here and, and y'all look at this thing very closely because we're trying to make this decision. We got to keep this project moving. Every day, we're delayed. It costing us money, and we do not have time for any more errors like we have had in the last few days. They were not committed by you, but let me get to this motion. It's a five-part motion. I want you, everybody, to listen carefully, and I say that respectfully. I move as follows. Number one, that all bids received for renovations to the old city hall for the Starkville Police Department shall be in or hereby rejected. That's the first thing, rejecting the bids. Number two, that both the city's project architect and the city's chief of police shall discuss and determine together, together, as quickly as possible, what changes, if any, can be made to the current scope of work for the said renovation to the old city hall for the Starkville Police Department. Number three, that if any changes can be made to the current scope of work as determined, agreed upon, and recommended by both the project architect and the chief of police, the herein-referenced project shall then be re-advertised for rebidding under the revised scope of work with those bids to be received by the city and presented to the Board of Alderman at its August 16, 2016 meeting. Four, that the project architect, with the advice, consent, and involvement of the chief of police, and with full input from the chief of police, shall present to the Board of Alderman at its August 16, 2016 meeting, a cost estimate, a cost estimate for building a new facility for the Stark Police Department for comparison purposes. And five, finally, that the sale of the 2016 A Series general obligation bonds in the amount of $3 million and the sale of the 2016 B Series general obligation bonds in the amount of $2.4 million, both set for July 19, 2016, shall be postponed, subject to further action of the Board of Alderman. Mr. Mayor, I reduce that in writing, and I pass down, is there anyone at the table, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask, have any questions about my motion, I'd be happy to reread it.
All right, hold on. Let me...
It's reduced.
Can you pass it?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been read. It's been reduced to writing without objection. I will not ask for it to be reread. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Perkins, you speak on the mayor.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion. Alden Carver.
Just sitting here thinking of other possible options. I know we talked about like Highway 8182 in the quarter and improving that whole area, and we still own some land on 18A, don't we?
We own one small parcel, the building that joins the bail, bail bonding.
Do you remember from those previous discussions how much it would take to just outright finish purchasing that block and from a land acquisition standpoint, you know, thinking of locations that might work and be more feasible? And then, it's a twofold question, and I'm going to throw, maybe this is for Mr. Kemp, is what it costs... what it costs round about to, at that time, to build the Starkville Electric Department building?
I can tell you, if mayor love initiative.
All right, you go ahead.
You want to know the price of building the Starkville Electric Department building? We built that building in two thousand and five through the two thousand and nine term. The contract, there's a change order too, but the original contract was a one point nine million dollars. We had three tracts of land, the tract right where the, now utility department's sitting now, we paid a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the next lot was old nearly, new shop was eighty-five thousand, and the old Taylor Brothers property was eighty-five, so it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the three tracts of acquisition. And the building, the original contract was roughly at one point nine, and there have been a change order a little bit more or less.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also, second fold, I've asked this question multiple times in here, but what does new construction cost? I know what it is on residential application, but what is it? I've heard one seventy-five, I've heard two twenty-five, because I keep doing the math and twenty-nine thousand, the first figure I heard was a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot and that came up to five point one million, so I'm sitting there going, you know, at this point, why are we not just building a new building? But has anybody in this room, maybe Mr. Schaefer, what does new construction cost if we were to put this police station out on flat ground somewhere?
There's a good example, city people have just finished their thirty-four thousand square foot police station, no land cost, ten million dollars.
How many?
Ten million, that's three hundred dollars a square foot.
Is that pretty standard as far as any municipal government right now, is it a building?
For a new building.
Further discussion, Aldman Carver, do you yield?
Test got eight point seven million, about three hundred. I'm just going to do some fact checking on that and look back. I'm just looking for options to, you know, at this point, we're looking for, basically looking for a place to put our police department as quickly as possible. I look at this the other way, I would be probably in favor if we, you know, I think we're costing ourselves a month by elongating this process, and here we are, going another month. If it doesn't work, we'll look back in thirty more days and we'll be right back where we started. I've seen the projects like this go both ways. I don't think, and I'm remodeling a house now, so I'm thinking about this as a fixer-upper standpoint, but everything comes in over budget, everything comes in with change orders, it's not going to come in cheaper. Never has, never will, my dad always says it costs more and takes longer, and it's proven true in my residential setting I'm in now, and it's going to prove true with this too, so thank you.
Further discussion, any further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion? Saying not, all those in favor of Aldman Perkins' motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. By a vote of six in favor with one against, the motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of a resolution of the Claiborne and Adelaide LLC new enterprise exemption application declaring the...
Move forward.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to approve of a resolution of the Claiborne and Adelaide LLC new enterprise exemption application declaring the facility property eligible for directing the city clerk to file the necessary paperwork with the state auditor and other necessary entities as presented. Aldman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Wynn. Aldman Little, you will speak on the mayor.
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion saying not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have the vice mayor casting, by a vote of five in favor and one against, and I have the vice mayor casting the dissenting vote, the motion passes. The next matter before you, you have before you is the presentation of the audit by Randy Scribner from Watkins Ward and Stafford.
Mayor, board, as always, appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you. It's kind of disheartening when I've seen the audience leave, I thought everybody was going to listen to the auditor tonight. I'm going to go as briefly as I can, but please understand, I'm here at your disposal to ask questions. Also, as you have a chance to review the audit report, go back over the presentation that I have tonight, if you have any additional questions, give me a call and we can go over them in the office. One of the strange things that happened this year, well, first of all, let me back up, you do have a clean opinion, you have an unmodified opinion, which means that we were able to say that the city of Starkville's finances were materially correct. And that's always, you know, the important goal that you want to achieve in an audit. There's a very strange animal that hit governmental audits in the state of Mississippi in two thousand and fifteen fiscal year, and it's a accounting pronouncement called GASP-68 and its unrecorded pension liabilities. And we can spend a half a day here discussing GASP-68 and why it's here and why it's not here. I'll tell you my brief opinion of it, it's a very poor attempt by a government standards board to put a standard out that identifies a problem with unfunded government pensions, but for us in the state of Mississippi, it didn't meet what we needed it to do. For instance, GASP-68 essentially says a city of Starkville has a twenty-five million dollar potential liability related to the PERS system. Now, the failures in that calculation, it's based on current employees. That's not a real number because, you know, depending on the latest and the greatest and the hottest cities, you've got the higher employer rates and that's, those percentages of PERS at that snapshot date is what determines what that liability is recorded at. Also, I'll debate, as well as most officials inside the audit department AG's office, that this isn't a liability of our local governments, this is a liability of the state of Mississippi. And it should go on the state of Mississippi's audit report instead of the city of Starkville. With all that said, it takes the city of Starkville, if you look at the front pages of your audit report, it's called the GASP-34 sections, it takes it to a deficit net position. Bonding agencies, different governments should not look at those pages, they should dial back into the fund financial statements in the back, the GASP-68 is not reflected back in the back. But this is a pronouncement that did not on local governments, and this is not unique to Starkville. It had a significant impact on financial statements this year. It also has a significant impact on the timing because that's an external audit, we don't as external auditors, we don't get that information until February. And so it makes it really difficult to get you timely information. And we've actually talked to the mayor and city clerk on ways that we can get more timely information to you next year instead of being nine months out. I'm not going to go over each of the financial numbers, I have had an exit conference with the mayor, had an exit conference with the city clerk. Your budgets, when we looked at our ending balances, your budgeted balance numbers coming into the, for the sixteen budget are very close to where we are, and most of the time they're a little, we exceeded those in your cash positions. So I don't see any budget items that you would have to make related to your beginning fund balances that you've already, in the current year's budget that you're in. For instance, a general fund cash position is about one point three-two million dollars, not a bad place to be in general fund cash. We did run into ten conditions that need to be reported inside of an audit report. That's a little unusual, usually you have two or three. It's important to understand that those conditions are snapshot, an audit is defined by a series of checklists and a series of numbers. And when something happens, we have, in old terms, it's called a reportable condition, now it's called a significant deficiency. I don't like the term significant deficiency because it makes it sound really bad, and sometimes it is bad, you know, we call that a material weakness. There's two items I want to point out to you as you're looking at your findings that I think warrant your attention as governance. One of them is our pooled cash reconciliations. That's finding two thousand and fifteen dash oh one.
Randy, did you bring...
And I'll have all this emailed tomorrow.
Did you bring, did you have email tomorrow?
I did not bring it. I just drove in from East Tennessee, two hours before the meeting, spent three days on Appalachian Trail, and I didn't realize my staff had not brought the report so far. But the pooled cash accounts had deficit cash balances and had some reconciliation issues. We've worked with the city clerk's office, we've got some things going on, we've, they had a lot of transition this year, and with everything transitioned, and you're taking a snapshot of something, it's easy for an item to drop or not happen, and I just want everybody to take that in mind when you read through that. The one that caused me the biggest grief as an auditor, and it's one that we have discussed over the last ten years at the city of Starkville, and that's our federal awards process. You have department heads writing grant applications, and the city clerk doesn't have all the information that they need to adequately record and process that information. And in today's electronic world, banks throw money in your account with no explanation, and then your city clerk's department has to start finding out that Department X wrote a five thousand dollar grant for tennis shoes. And that's great, we want the five thousand dollars, but now we don't know whether it's federal money or state money, and we don't have a way of tracking that at the city clerk's level. As an auditor, it makes it really challenging for us to put together the federal awards. And that's the one finding, it's not listed as material weakness, but that's the one thing that really, you know, as you're looking at this, you need to keep focused. The rest of them, they're just, it's a snapshot of what happened, I mean, we had a situation where some funds weren't transferred between accounts in a timely manner, one was a self-reporting issue, but those are your two major items that you need to be aware of, the pooled cash we've discussed before and the federal awards, it's been a couple of years, but this year we saw a decline in recording of our federal awards.
Mayor Maynard?
You may. Randy?
Just to make sure I clearly understand, you're recommending as an auditor that we go away from pooled cash back to separate accounts in order to track spending and deposit. Is it your opinion that by doing that, that would also help with the grant tracking because we can then track federal grants and federal lines, state grants and state lines?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is one of the things, we actually started that discussion when we were discussing several months ago, some utility transfers. And pooled cash, to give you a concept of what it is, is you have one big bank account, and ten years ago in government accounting, you had to actually make a transfer between the bank accounts. If you wrote, paid, if you paid bills out of accounts payable, you wrote a check where you called the bank and transferred the money between a clearing account that always zeroed out and the different funds that those bills were paid out of. Right now, it's a bunch of computer entries, and the computer controls those entries, and it's entries going everywhere, and somebody has to review those.
Talking about computer entries, we use the Tyler accounting system here.
That's right.
I think it's twelve. What are your thoughts on that system? I know you see a lot of different systems in other...
It is not one of the highest ranked systems, it is usable. The city of Starkville is the only system that I have experience with on that software. When I compare it to other systems, we swim upstream a lot. Now, is that our fault or is that a programming fault? I haven't looked at that enough to be able to answer that question, but we do swim upstream an awful lot to where we're fighting some of the information that's coming from the system. All systems have downfalls, so I mean, you know, I can't go in and put it in document against Tyler, but I can say that we swim upstream, we fight that system. But a change, ultimately, is expensive. It's easier to work inside of what you've got than it is to try to revamp to a new But back to your question, the pooled cash, if we can get into a situ, back into a situation that we're controlling the transfers, ninety-five percent of your pooled cash and your deficit cash balances take cares, removes itself, because right now, the system's making entries and you don't have enough bodies to review all of the, you know, to review all the entries because it makes so many of them. One transaction can generate eight entries.
You done with the presentation?
Yes.
Let me make some comments because as Randy alluded to, the city clerk and I have met with Randy on a couple occasions, and there are some things that I want to know about the audit report. First of all, with the exception of the water fund, water sewer fund, all of your funds, all of your major funds are in a strong position. Now, water sewer, I've alluded to before and we've known for some time, that fund does not have a high enough reserve level. The audited cash position as of September thirtieth of last year was four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. For a capital intense operation like that, that's too low. And Terry's well aware of that, and Terry has been making, taking steps to raise the reserve level of that fund. So hopefully by the September thirtieth audit of this year, we'll see a better cash position because in the long haul, that number has to improve. The sanitation fund was at seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which is an adequate reserve for sanitation. You were at one point three million for the general fund, which I'd like to see that number higher, but it's certainly an adequate level of reserve. Now, as Randy alluded to, we did have ten findings, and that's something I want to talk about a little bit because ten findings is too many findings for our audit report. And it's something that Lisa and I have talked a good bit about, and we want to make sure that we're in a position where we are correcting the issues that are pointed out in those findings. And if I could summarize the issues for you, really, the main issues fall into one of three categories. The first category, we've talked a lot about, that's pooled cash. This is an issue that we've known was a problem for a while now, and it's been growing, you know. Where the problem has manifested itself in day-to-day operations is we have a hard time at any given time of the year getting an accurate cash position of our major funds, and that's a problem. For policymakers too, you need to be able to be aware of what the cash position of a fund is, and the pooled cash system is just conducive to sloppy accounting practices that make finding that number at any given time difficult, or that has proven the case for us. That's why about seven, eight months ago, Lisa came to you and she asked for the board order and you gave it to her to begin the process of separating those into separate accounts. Now, that's not something you can just flip the switch and do overnight. The main reason we asked for that order at that point in time and why it was so critical is with the water fund reserves so low, we had to get an accurate read on where those were to make sure that we weren't imperiling that fund. So they have not finished the process of transferring the water funds completely because we didn't have an audited cash position the day that we did it. So what we've discussed as a corrective measure for our issues with pooled cash is by the end of this month, Randy has committed, and Lisa has committed to doing the work on the city side, to having a full, up-to-date audited separation of the water fund, the sanitation fund, the airport fund, and the restricted fire and police accounts. And I might add, if we're doing really well, we should try to tackle the park two percent fund as well. But the five that we are committed to having done by the end of the month, or the five that I mentioned earlier. Also, we had issues, and they were separate issues, but it's noteworthy they were of the same category related to bond transactions. And the reason I think it's noteworthy they were of the same category is bond transactions are an irregular transaction for the clerk's office to process, and we messed up twice. It was two different types of errors, but all of the funds are accounted for, but it's something that's a good checkup to make sure that our accounting practices are cleaner in the future. In one instance, we had... In one instance, we had the general fund paying a bond for Starkville Utilities, and in the process, this was around the time, I guess, that Debbie Clark was retiring, and the time-honored practice was the general fund would pay it, and the utilities department would turn around and invoice the general fund, and it would be paid back. And new personnel in an office that weren't accustomed to automatically going through the motions in that arrangement, it took several months before the general fund was paid back for the bond payment. So the corrective measure that's taken there is in the future, Starkville Utilities will service the debt directly on that bond. Add another bond-related issue. Randy?
The $3 million bond you opened the bank account correctly.
Oh, yeah, so that we were, we failed to, we were recording all of the revenue, but we were recording revenue as we were drawing on it for expenditures. And Randy's office reminded us that the proper way to record the revenue is record all the revenue on the front end and then draw expenditures against the revenue. So Lisa's office understands that process, and that's the way bond revenues will be reported in the future. And the final category, which really is probably the most important category, is state and federal programs. And this has been an issue in many years past as well. Now, last year, we had a significant number of federal and state awards, and I think they were significant both in quantity of the awards and overall amount of the awards. So in some cases, you had a lot of small awards, which still require a lot of grant paperwork, and in other cases, you had one very, very large award in the Mill at MSU parking deck project. And the bottom line message from our auditors is the flow of paperwork and communication from department heads to the city clerk's office is not as seamless as it needs to be. So we've talked a lot about this and how, rather than continuing to just list a finding that we're not doing very well here, how we actually put ourselves on course, maybe to not have this finding in the future. And the action that we're committed to taking is Lisa and Randy are going to organize a workshop in the month of July that will include all of our department heads that handle federal and state funds, which that is pretty much all of our department heads. And they're going to talk about the process as it is in their office and the process that Lisa needs so that we don't have this finding. And it's not just about the finding. The reason the finding is so significant is mishandling of federal funds by mistake is still a major, major issue. So that's why they underscore it so much. So after that process is complete in July, Lisa will be reporting back to the board with a recommendation for a policy that we will adhere to in our processes for federal and state awards. And that's due from Lisa in the month of August. So Randy indicated, will you be emailing the audit?
I will email the audit as well as this condensed presentation that I will send that also that just has the highlights of the audit report.
Alderman Little?
Would you direct Joel to put that on the internet?
Yep. And Joel is out this evening. As soon as Joel, Scott, whoever it may be in the morning, is in the office to receive it, Lisa and I will make sure that it is up on the web. And Alderman, for those of you that receive email, you'll receive an email immediately. You've got all their emails.
We've got everybody's emails.
If you do not receive an email, we'll see that it gets to you by close of business tomorrow.
I said again, if you have any questions, please call, because this process is very important to so many decisions that you make. One thing we are going to change in the future, for next year, is I want to be before you in December at the latest of January meeting, not with an audit presentation, because that just can't happen outside of nine months. City of Starkville's too big. You can't have a 30-day, 60-day audit anymore. It's just, it's not going to happen. But I would like to be before you instead of dropping, you know, numbers that really don't have a lot of meaning. I want to be before you in December and January, hopefully December with September 30th numbers that you can rely on. And Lisa and I have discussed, we're going to do more interim auditing. Instead of trying to come in in November, we're going to try to do more on a month or every other month. Our office has been very cooperative in working with us in that, and so we think it's a win-win situation for us to do more interim work rather than try to throw a group of eight people on a staff for a two-week period.
Further questions, comments from Mr. Scrivener?
Any further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Scrivener.
I'll be watching you at 11:00.
Oh, wait, we need a motion. Well, I guess we'll take the motion to accept the audit.
Just accept the audit.
Do I hear a motion to accept the audit? The motion has been made by Alderman Walker to accept the audit as presented by Mr. Scrivener. Alderman Walker, such a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the matter?
No.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion in consideration of IRS notice 2011 1099 miscellaneous forms. Oh, goodness. I'm sorry. The consideration of resolution, the mayor.
Did you say move approval?
I did. I think somebody spoke her.
Yeah. All right, let me get the motion called, and you can go ahead and be making your way forward. Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of a resolution of the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi determining the necessity for and invoking the authority granted to municipalities by the legislature with respect to tax increment financing as set forth in Chapter 45 of Title 21 of the Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended determining that the Stark Crossing Development Project is a project eligible for tax increment financing, that a public hearing be conducted in connection with the tax increment financing plan and for other related purposes as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Christiana Sugg with Chris Gurus's office. Thank you for your time tonight, and congratulations on your recent recognition by NML. That's really exciting. We are here today to ask that y'all set a public hearing and publish a notice of a public hearing for the first meeting in August to consider a proposed amended and restated TIF plan. We are reviving the Academy Sports project, and we would like for y'all to take this matter up for consideration for the public hearing if you so approve that resolution in front of you. The proposed changes to the TIF plan are going to be minimal. We have a new developer who's teed up. He's an affiliate of Mike Roser and Mike Roser Construction, Arm Development LLC. We're making a change to the TIF district to move the TIF district to include five acres north of the original project area. We're adding a road that will be dedicated to the city, and we're asking that the city increase its contribution from 33% of sales tax rebates to 50%. And we're also going to be making requests at the county that it's 50-50-50, y'all's ad valorem, sales tax rebates, and the county's ad valorem. We'd ask for your support. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Further discussion, Alderman Maynard?
My understanding is now that there will be a public road that goes from 12 through the property to connect to the other, this road that comes by the theater.
Yes, sir, to Hollywood Boulevard. Is it Hollywood Boulevard or Hollywood Road to the cul-de-sac there? Yes, sir, it's going to run north and then veer slightly east. And the Academy Sports will face that road.
And although the percentage is changing, the bottom line number, as I understood, is staying roughly the same as according to the mall.
Yes, sir. The ask is still the same, 1.5 million dollars in TIF. One change that I did not mention is obviously some of the numbers will adjust a little bit. We've right-sized our sales projections to 16 million, down from the original 21 to 23 million, which will have a ripple effect in the document regarding projections, but yes, sir. That will be a public road that'll be dedicated and connect 12 to Hollywood.
They're hoping to have this open win, open going?
The plan, Academy runs on a very tight timeline, and the plan is if the city and the county are on board, they will be able to, and able to approve at the beginning of August, the developer plans to deliver the project by the end of April, which puts Academy opening between 45 and 60 days after that.
Further discussion? Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, please signify by raising your hand. I have six in favor and one against the motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Sugg.
Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. The next matter before you is a discussion in consideration of IRS notice 2011 1099 miscellaneous forms, and this is an issue relates back to 2011. The city had a late filing on 1099 forms. We subsequently appealed the finding twice, and looking back at the language that we put in our appeal, more or less, we threw ourselves at the mercy of the IRS and said, we represent the tax-paying public. Please don't make us pay this penalty. And we strung that along and strung that along, and as far as we knew, that we were still awaiting incision from the IRS until we got the notice that we needed to pay or else by July 14th. So the clerk and I had a conversation with the IRS, and they informed us that indeed our appeal had been denied, although we have no record of receiving the denial of appeal. We can appeal again. I would not recommend it. We're carrying interest on this. I don't think it does any good to kick this can down the road. I would recommend approving this, pay the fine out of the contingency fund, and move on.
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to approve of paying IRS notice 2011 1099 miscellaneous forms as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion, saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a discussion in consideration of VA 1605. Mr. Havlin?
of three lots at the corner of University Drive and North Montgomery. That is the property on University Drive, it's directly across the street from Peck Park South, and also just to the east of the shopping boutique, Keith's House House. It is located in a T5 district. It's on that northeastern corner of that intersection. The current, currently the property is under contract to be purchased for redevelopment. Three properties are part of a proposed mixed-use development. That puts a question to aggregate the three parcels, which would be this bottom section here. This top portion here is going to come before the board next meeting for rezoning, but these bottoms here are already zoned, T5, but there are three separate lots. The proposed lot aggregation would exceed the maximum lot width for a T5 district. The proposed new lot width would be 258 feet along University Drive. A variance in the maximum lot width, 120 feet, would be required prior to lot aggregation. On June 22nd, 2016, the Board of Adjustment Appeals made the recommendation of approval for this request.
Questions or comments from Mr. Havlin? Alderman Vaughn?
First of all, thank you very much, Daniel, for bringing this and for the applicants looking. I'm sorry I didn't move you further upon the agenda. I think we're excited, I'm excited, for the potential for this project and what it can do for University Drive and the extension of what I would call midtown in between the cotton district university and downtown. I think this would be a huge boon for that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approval of the VA 1605 variance request from the maximum lot width requirements for proposed lot aggregation at the northeast corner of the intersection of University Drive and North Montgomery Street with the following four conditions. One, the principal entrances of any primary or secondary building shall be oriented toward a frontage line or the facade of a secondary or primary building with the exception of units located in the rear of the building adjacent to a parking lot. Two, a first-story non-residential use shall not be raised or lowered more than 18 inches from the walkways to the points of access into the building. Three, the first floor of any building located along University Drive shall be non-residential use on at least 70% of the total building's facade along a frontage line. Again, just to clarify that that is not 70% gross footage, that is 70 linear feet, and the depth can be whatever depth you're looking at. Four, the first floor of any building located along North Montgomery Street shall be non-residential use within 120 feet of the southwest corner of the property line. So just using this to help the other board members understand that last condition, if you look at it, so the building in this example of drawing, which again, they're not bound by this drawing, but in this example, it would be essentially from that property line in the southwest corner right there and extend 120 feet, which is, runs pretty much to the extent of the end of Building D, but not quite that far. If you look at what condition number three, we call it, where it says 70%, in this scenario, that would essentially include, they could break it up however they wanted to, but essentially would include all of Building A, the frontage part of Building A, the frontage part of Building B, and just a sliver of Building C. So it gives the developer, I believe, flexibility to meet their market demands that they're trying to meet, and at the same time, I believe, it gives the city assurances that if this primary corner of University Drive and North Montgomery Street is to redevelop, that having that be commercial or non-residential use is critically important as we move forward, and that's the intention of these conditions. So with that, I yield the floor.
And has your motion been reduced or writing?
It has.
Motion's been reduced or writing. It's been read. I'm pleased with the city clerk. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread, saying none. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the matter?
Other than to say the applicants are here, if you have any questions or concerns about these, now would be the time to raise them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have one question. Daniel, would there be any home street parking on either University or Montgomery?
That would be something that we would discuss, I guess, further along as the cycle plan develops out. This is just a really decentralized drawing at this stage. I think along University, you may allow it to, you know, read my bill a little more generally.
Thank you guys, too.
Any further discussion, any further discussion, any further discussion, saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Thank you for your patience, and really excited about your project. All right, without objection, I'm going to take a simple brief recess. Any objection, objection, saying none?
The meeting will now come back to order. Next matter before you is a discussion in consideration of address changes on Jefferson Street. Discussion.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard.
Now, Alderman Maynard, I didn't see anything as presented in my packet. Do you?
Bill, you want to?
Before I say as presented, I just need something that has been presented. Did I miss it?
No, it was nothing.
I do not know if anything got written up for the form.
What are the changes? We need to write them down.
We have eight businesses on Jefferson Street and one government business on Jefferson
of, I'm sorry, Alderman Walker, I can't take that motion yet.
How you?
I hijacked Alderman Maynard. Alderman Walker is making a motion to table the discussion in consideration of address changes on Jefferson Street. Alderman Maynard is that, or Alderman Walker is that your motion?
Yes.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measures table. Thank you, Mr. Green. Dean, next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of ratification of the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Montgomery and Green. Y'all will recall, after all the discussion we had on Green Street last week, it was going to stay as is for a while. Nature did not intend that to be, as I guess the light collapsed, is that correct?
We think that some vehicles get heated.
So it wasn't nature, I guess.
No.
At any rate, it was not meant to be for the light to stay up, and in order to maintain traffic, stop signs were replaced, the light, which is no longer operable, and we need that to be ratified. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of ratifying installation of stop signs at the intersection of Montgomery and Green, and information signs on Green Street at that intersection as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of ratification of the installation of stop signs at the intersection of Montgomery and Green. Y'all will recall, after all the discussion we had on Green Street last week, it was going to stay as is for a while. Nature did not intend that to be, as I guess the light collapsed, is that correct?
We think that some vehicles get heated.
So it wasn't nature, I guess.
No.
At any rate, it was not meant to be for the light to stay up, and in order to maintain traffic, stop signs were replaced, the light, which is no longer operable, and we need that to be ratified. Discussion.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of ratifying installation of stop signs at the intersection of Montgomery and Green, and information signs on Green Street at that intersection as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of appointments to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the appointments of members to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of appointments to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the appointments of members to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of appointments to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of the appointments of members to the Keep Startle Beautiful Committee as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is discussion in consideration of outside funding requests for fiscal year 2017. You had one amendment to the request that the city clerk placed on your desk, and that was the request from world chambers, so supplement the information that you have with that.
I had this on screen, but I don't know, Daniel must bail on this, so. In the packet, you had a list of all the previous year's amounts that were requested and budgeted. In your packets, you also had a listing of the 2017 requests that were listed there as well. Several items that we need to discuss tonight. The first one, the American Red Cross requested six thousand dollars. OSERVs did not send in a request. I contacted them today, they actually moved and changed addresses, so they did not get the letter asking for the request, but they would like to be funded. My recommendation is whoever we fund is an emergency aid group, we don't need to fund two, we just need to fund one, and we decide if we're going to fund OSERVs or if we're going to fund the Red Cross, and then to what extent we wish to fund those. So, OSERVs, SERVs, just October County, the Red Cross is a tri-county regional group. Personally, I would recommend we fund OSERVs at the same level we funded them last year, which was five thousand dollars. So we can come back to that. In the far-right column, I went through and plugged in numbers with the idea in mind that we would fund at the same level of outside contributions as last year. Certainly, these are all up for discussion, but I wanted us to have at least a starting point. I'll just run down the list, and then we can come back. Boy Scouts did not request anything, and have not for years. Boys and Girls Club, we funded them at five thousand dollars last year, they requested twelve thousand dollars this year. I'm recommending we fund them at the same level we did the previous year at five thousand dollars. Volunteer Startle, we funded last year at twenty-five hundred, I'm recommending, even though they asked for five thousand, we fund them at twenty-five hundred again this year. The PDD has two areas, one is the transportation grant. Last year, we funded that grant at twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. This year, they requested thirty-two thousand, five hundred. In my recommendation, I'm recommending we increase their funding to thirty thousand, five hundred. Then keeping the home meals delivery grant match the same, which is what they requested, eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and then fifteen hundred dollars for Safe Haven. This year, we received a request from Community Counseling Services for twelve thousand dollars. We have not funded that group in the past. Again, it's up for discussion, I did not include them in the funding model that I'm recommending. We've had five hundred dollars in for advertising, I left that the same. Again, I put for my request, five thousand in for OSERVs, five thousand in for Brickfire, which is what they requested, seventy-five hundred in for the Main Street Award Match, which is what they requested, and what we funded them at last year. Twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Chamber of Commerce part of the Greater Startle Development Partnership, five thousand dollars for the Heritage Museum, which is what they requested, fifteen thousand dollars for the Grant Match for OCH Ambulance Service, Humane Society, and I see Ms. Wall here, I'll let her speak to this as well. She had requested one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. I'm recommending we fund that at one hundred and six thousand, which is what we funded it last year. I'm recommending reducing the horse park funding from twenty thousand to ten thousand. The library requested a slight increase to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars because they need a new air conditioning unit. The library, the Board of Supervisors funds them at the same level that we fund them. I believe, I don't, what's the Board of Supervisors fund Humane Society at? Do you know off the top of your head? How much money?
I didn't read that.
Okay.
But they have an increase.
Okay. And then I recommended thirty-five hundred dollars each for the Arts Council, Community Theater, Symphony, and MSU Shuttle. Again, that brought my recommendations to four hundred, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is exactly what we spent last year in outside contributions.
Do you have a motion?
And Mayor, I would make a motion that this be accepted as our outside contributions for 2016-17 budget.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to approve of the outside contributions for the fiscal year 2017 budget as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Settle.
And motion has been made, it's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? On the carpet.
Yeah, let's say, all two things that really stood out to me were the PDD transportation. What was the increase needed for that?
That has been a grant match in the past, I believe.
That's what it is. So. Is that sufficient? I mean, thirty-five, if they were requesting thirty-two, five on that?
I think it's.
It's just picking numbers.
Yeah, it is.
All right, so the other one I had a question, the horse park, I know for thirty years they've questioned, it's kind of, it's gone down gradually, I know, for the last five or six years. So it's a two-fold question, why are we supporting them at all, if any, and that's ten thousand dollar savings. If they were not requesting really anything specific, why? Because normally, this board is the other way with the horse park, it's kind of been over the years gradually weaning the funds, so if then this is the first year they're not asking for funds, why are we giving ten thousand?
And?
And why not twenty?
I agree, the trend, since I've been on the board, we've reduced that funding at ten thousand dollars every year. This will be the fourth year in a row. If you'll look at the under where it's the budgeted items, our first year here, it was forty thousand, which is, that list is not on here, but then like, two years ago, it was thirty, last year it was twenty. I just reduced it by ten again.
Just set the pattern.
No rhyme or reason, but you're right, you are correct, they, in their letter today, they did not, that they submitted, they did not put an amount, they just said any support would be appreciated.
I just sort of think there'll be some cost savings involved, especially if you get a letter that says something as generic as any support appreciated. However, I would think that they're very successful in what they do, they're very self-sufficient. We've gotten into the numbers game with the horse park before, but I just, I just had questions. And then last was the library, if they need a new AC, is, I have concerns, maybe, is that enough? Is that what they said? They, they said the one hundred and eighty will get them the full commercial AC unit that they need, and?
My inclination is that would also be matched by the county.
Yes, sir.
So that's probably, would get them half what they need.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion saying none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have a win against, the motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion in consideration of personnel requests. You will recall, you have elected to take the budget as a committee at the whole this year, and you have selected Alderman Maynard as your chair, so as this is a budget process, I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Alderman Maynard.
There should be another one right up there next to it. So board, last year about this time, we voted that by June first of 2017, every city employee would make at least ten dollars in highway. So what you have in front of you, the top listings there are part-time employees, where you see the salary kicking in, and I eliminated that on this screen, is the full-time employees and their pay rate. One of the things, as you're adjusting pay for anybody, is issues of salary compression. So to get the lowest-paid employee, which is at nine dollars and forty-four cents an hour, to ten dollars an hour is going to require a six percent pay increase. Well, if you give that person a six percent pay increase, all of a sudden, they're making more than somebody that is above them in pay grade. So in order to avoid salary compression, you have to slowly move through those. So you'll see here through the first, I can't remember the total number, but it was about, I think, ninety employees, pay rates are increased from six percent to five percent, all the way down to one percent for those making eleven dollars and fifty cents an hour currently. And that was really the first break that I could get to, to avoid salary compression. That kicks those individuals up to eleven dollars and sixty-one cents an hour. The next pay grade ahead of that is eleven dollars and seventy-six cents an hour. So I say all that and show all those adjustments to say that if we make this effective, as we voted to do, July one, 2017, we will still have three months left in this budget to pay, to show these increases. That is going to cost us eighteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-three dollars and twenty-five cents to finish that last quarter. So that is one item that you can go ahead and write down, that has to be included in next year's budget as a budget increase to fund that resolution that we passed last year at this time. So that is where I'm going to start this conversation. That's eighteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-three dollars that's there. That will, though, however, take care of a lot of employees, and will take care of all of the employees that we discussed last year that were the lowest-paid employees in the city of Startle. So that will get them to that ten-dollar level. Now, whoever is sitting in this chair in the next Alderman cycle needs to keep in mind, the budget is done for the seventeen, eighteen budget, the rest of that mandate is going to have to be funded. So that's going to be about another fifty-eight thousand that is automatically going to have to be added to the seventeen, eighteen budget to keep that salary line going. Is that, any questions on that? It clear?
Are you counting all employees from all funds in that?
Yes, that is counting all, Stephanie, that is counting all employees from all funds.
So some of that would be in Startle Utilities and sanitation and private services.
They would, yes. So somewhere, they're going to have to be, that money's going to have to come. So that, that takes care of that. So that's item number one to think about. Item number two, we tabled, I guess, was there any, Stephanie, was there anything else on that? That makes sense? Okay. Item number two, that, my item number two, I had the discussion of the court clerk's salary, and I'm going to let Tony, we tabled this matter several meetings ago, and pushed it to this meeting, so I'm going to let Tony quickly come up and talk about those personnel needs.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, thank you, Alderman Maynard. We have two requests for your consideration this evening when it comes to the budget. Number one, the employment of an additional full-time deputy court clerk. Here's why. Caseload is directly correlated with the number of officers Sergeant Nichols has. The board has increased those positions by seven, soon to be eight. Uh, the Board has increased those positions by seven, soon to be eight. Five of those, soon to be six, are on patrol. Two of those are parking officers. And the chief would tell you, patrol is where cases are generated. That's where you have the citations, that's where you have the arrests. We've already started to feel the effect. Uh, as of right now, we're on pace for a fourteen percent increase compared to last year, and these new officers aren't even in a car by themselves yet. If you approve this, this position will assist also with the entry of any court-related files into our new electronic filing system. It'll also mitigate the substantial hardship that is created anytime we lose an existing clerk. That takes us to our second request, which is to ensure that these deputy salaries are commensurate with comparable positions inside the city. I realize there are many positions and many departments within the city that have salary issues, the Board is very well aware of that, and I believe you're also familiar with our situation. We've lost a very large number of deputy clerks over the last several years. We've lost two in the last six months. We only have four. Exit interviews have consistently indicated two things. Number one, low salary compared to other positions inside the city, and the number two, a high and very demanding workload combined with that low salary. Very recently, we had a job that opened up inside the city in another department that's very similar to a court clerk position. Seventy-five percent of our deputy clerks applied for that position because it included a five thousand dollar increase in pay. You have a situation where three out of four clerks apply for a similar position in another department inside the city because of that five thousand dollar increase, that tells me adjustments need to be made. When we have to work under the constant threat of turnover, that tells me adjustments need to be made, at least considered. This is a very concerning situation for the court clerk, for the municipal judge, and for me. We're asking you to consider this as a priority, as you consider the budget process, and we want to thank you for any consideration you can get to this.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rook?
Mr. Rook?
Sir.
Can you speak to your statistics? You mentioned that they increased fourteen percent six, six months in.
Yes, sir.
If I recall your presentation the last couple of years, I've seen the decline.
That's correct. It's fourteen percent compared to last year.
Yes, sir.
We do expect those numbers to continue to increase, and I think the chief would tell you, as soon as these new rookies get out of the car, they get away from their training officer, they get out of the academy, they're in a car by themselves, you're going to see numbers drastically increase, have in the past. And the number, the reason numbers were down the last couple of years is because of an enormous amount of turnover that they've had to deal with.
You're saying, um, if you're five thousand dollars to get, to get them in line with the other deputy, deputy clerks? Because you're saying you've got four of them, so twenty thousand dollars, would, would correct that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Mr. Rook, I want to just, I have a question about the claim stocking, could you stay a few minutes?
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Um, it's, as Tony alluded to with the, with the clerks, one of the items that we looked at prior to, um, th- this meeting, when he presented with the other meeting, to get them in line with other cities around us, Tupelo, Oxford, and to, to stay within what I think our budget would hold, I was looking to recommend a, a fifteen percent increase for those court clerks, which would amount, a total amount of about fourteen thousand, four hundred fifty-seven dollars in the budget. If we added an additional clerk at twenty-seven thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars, that would bring a total to forty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. Not sure we can do that at this time, we may need to look at if we want to add another clerk to that staff waiting halfway through the year, and then picking up that staff member, or potentially looking at somebody part-time as that caseload builds, and then converting them to full-time later on. Those are, are those two options. I'm going to skip now to item number three, which is police chief, help me out if I...
I'm sorry, could you, could you repeat that first part? You said it was a fifteen percent?
Yes. A fifteen percent increase would be, all of them would, would come up to a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars total, not, not per person. Yeah. Make sure I'm clear there. Twenty-seven, five, eighteen. For the Police Department, Chief, you're requesting to utilize the salary of the Assistant Chief, who just retired...
Yes, sir.
...to fund three positions. An entry-level police officer, a salary grade eight, a certified police officer, a salary grade nine, and an accreditation manager slash records clerk at a salary grade nine. These three positions could be...
Um, it's two positions, not three. I don't think it's two officer positions.
It's either or.
No, officers are certified officers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was just two.
Yeah.
Okay, two positions. Should have kept quiet, you might have got a third officer in there. So funding one police officer, one accreditation manager, records clerk, utilizing the salary of the Assistant Chief that just retired, so from a budget outline, it'd be a zero net in your budget, it would still be the same going forward.
Yes, sir. Um, in, in a couple of years, um, because currently both, both captains I have, have less than three years in, in our rank, and keeping in, being consistent with our SOP, we want them to have at least three years between ranks. So in, in a couple of years, when I, I want to bring that position back, so the only thing we have to do is add the captain's pay, add money to that captain's pay.
Right.
Probably about fifteen thousand dollars or so.
Okay.
But between now and then...
For next year, this is, is what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Chief?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to, sorry, I just want to clarify that, Chief. So you're saying you're, you're not wanting to eliminate the position of Assistant Chief?
Temporarily.
Temporarily. You're saying you're not want to, you don't want to, you want to use that funding to, to get somewhere else, but still have that on the books as captains potentially look ready, get ready to move up, or, uh, more of a need in the budget to be able to, be able to fund that position, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And in the event you do decide to fill the position, your plan would be one captain, one Assistant Chief?
No.
And you, you would add the Assistant Chief position back?
Right. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kim, do you want to talk about the rate progression?
I think it applies to both of them.
We'll start with Terry, talk about your...
Okay. What we would like to do is cut, develop or implement a rate progression plan in our Starkville on our water distribution side. Uh, we have noticed, and we will be having some vacancies and opportunities in the future. The intent of this plan is to really try to start developing the existing staff there for the future. Right now, I have twelve maintenance workers, some have been there for a couple of years, some have been there for a long period of time, uh, but this structure, what we're asking for, uh, is more driven by training, uh, detailed documented experience and some testing, uh, both on the technical side of it, but also in the leadership capabilities to prepare them for that foreman and moving up inside the organization as those slots open up. So that's what we'd like to do.
And this is similar to what you already have done on the electric side?
Very, very similar, that's exactly right. Uh, we'd bring in, and I think we'd use this framework if we were to hire a new maintenance person into the organization, it would clear, give a clear path of expectations that they want to move up through the organization, uh, and, uh, but which I would think helps in also recruitment, but also in retention of the quality people that we're going to need long-term. Our skill sets are changing, our needs are changing, and we're trying to be more efficient, and I think this really allows us to do that.
Okay. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Now Edward, you have the same?
I just had a quick graphic to show the board, to kind of give you an idea of favor. Um, we're, we're experiencing the same thing that the Water Department, and I believe Emma will also attest to this, in Sanitation Environmental Services, every position I have highlighted right here is vacant, or is under, um, is, is absent due to health medical leave. As you can see, we are severely lacking what I would call supervisory type positions. We have advertised for equipment operator and foreman position, I don't know the total number, Stephanie, it's probably been between eight and ten times over the last eighteen months, and the applicant pool for those types of positions, um, is virtually nonexistent. We're getting no response from it, and we're actually starting to get into a position now where instead of having three crews that do general types of work, as you can see, we only have one. We have decided that, you know, based on our current pay grade, we're not able to compete with the private sector, so I believe our best opportunity is to try to develop, um, people internally within our system. And I, it's my opinion, the only way to do that is to provide them an incentivized pay progression plan, where they have to meet milestones, where they have to eat, meet, uh, training, uh, levels, and encourage them to, to come up through the ranks. As, uh, my dad was saying, we have some maintenance workers in the city that have been there twenty years, same position, you know, they've gotten their, their, um, longevity increases, but there's been no incentive for them to, to move up in the organization. So I think that this pay progression would be a way, um, to do that and provide, um, more viability for our department going forward. Um, I would also say that I believe we can achieve this, at least from the Street Department, with a no increase in, um, in the budget. Um, it may, may require eliminating a maintenance worker position or something like that to make it budget neutral, but, um, in my opinion, it would be worth the, um, it would be worth that sacrifice if we had to do it that way.
Ms. Gandy?
Mr. Kim, real, real quick, if, if I might, um, so just so I'm clear, so what you're saying, like the equipment operator, uh, position, would that be, uh, looking at the, the chart, uh, for, for, uh, water, would that be equivalent to like the operator one sort of status?
Operator one. This is our current progression, um, it is the exact same progression as, as water. Now, s- uh, there's going to be a few tweaks between sanitation, street, and water based on the specific job requirements, but generally speaking, equipment operator one for water, street, and sanitation will all have a class B license. Equipment operator two will have a class A license. Same, um, level or, uh, period of service, I think it's six months from a EO one to an EO two, and the same thing from an EO two to a EO three, maybe it's eighteen months, twelve months from a two to a three. But either way, it, um, it's the same, same progression with just some slight tweaks of the actual, uh, requirements for each step.
Okay, tha- thank you, uh, and this maybe goes back to, to Terry, too, is, you, you can stay there, um, but it, so looking at the issues that we're having in water with, I would say similar to what it seems in the street where you had that lack of supervisory sort of positions that you're running into now, uh, do you see that being able to be accomplished in this next budget with looking, if this were to be adopted with your, um, your pay progression plan, to be able to go out in the private sector and find somebody to fill what, what in my mind is a, a real void that we have there in that position? And I think when you see constituents and the amount of development and infrastructure re- prepare that you all are having to do, that we have a, a serious need right there?
Yeah, really, really, leadership is really, uh, short right now, I think you touched on it. That's kind of like on the superintendent slot we're looking for right now, I see that that's probably is going to be hard to develop on quick enough to get to that point, but also if you looked at the age of some of the employees and where they're projected to come out for succession, it really creates a real need to start now, then over the next three to five years, I think then you'll start having good quality candidates internally to pick from.
Right, I g- I guess that comes back to, to my point, is I see, I think the progression plan is a great idea, but I see that as being, uh, uh, help us in the long, mid and long term to really begin to develop our people. Uh, but where we have some short-term real needs, um, I, I think it's going to be very important that we go out and to be competitive, to get the quality people that we need in some of those leadership type of positions, to make sure that our organization is running as smoothly as possible. Is that a fair assessment?
It is, and I think you touched on it too, because leadership is always kind of conscious, they're the ones that's really creating the technical expertise and trying to help people grow, you're not just waiting to a position and then trying to make them fit into that, it's a continuous process, and you know, that, that's, that's got to happen, I appreciate you saying.
Thank you.
I've got one question. But, but once we go into this route right here, will it stop some of the outsourcing that we're doing? I know, I know we showed it here, but will it stop some of the outsourcing, we'll be doing more housing, more working house instead of going outside? Both of you?
I, I, I think it goes back to what Alderman Walker was saying, this is, the progression plan is something that's going to take a while to get, back to the original slide with all those highlighted yellows, to get all those positions filled, it's not something that we can do overnight, or really even in a, in a one budget cycle, un- unless the pay goes up dramatically, and, and I don't really see that happening either. So I think as, as our department, as we continue to, to get fully staffed, yes, our, our outsourcing is going to go down, there's no doubt, and, and that, I would prefer that as well.
And I think so as well, I think what you're going to do is develop expertise to allow you to handle those, what I'd consider those medium jobs. Some of the real big ones, we only do a few per year, it really makes sense to go out there and have those good contractors to get in and get out, but yeah, I think long-term you'll start seeing a lot of that work being done.
So Ms. Ms. Gandy has a program that is very similar to the other two. Uh, one of the things I did pull on Ms. Gandy's, um, I had Ms. Halbert pull me what the current average of those workers is right now. So for the laborer one, um, she has the rate progression plan starting at ten dollars, that average worker right now makes nine seventy-six, but assuming we pass the, the ten dollar an hour, um, position that, that we're looking at earlier, that person would actually be kicked up to ten dollars and twenty-seven cents on average now, which would fall in the mid-range of, of what she has proposed. Um, landscape the same way, minimum eleven dollars, the average landscape worker's making eleven fourteen now, landfill, uh, minimum eleven dollars, the average is making eleven sixteen now, and then the numbers I'm reading are before this information goes into effect, so those would actually be kicked up more to the mid-range. Equipment operator, um, is averaging eleven dollars and thirty cents right now, the minimum there would be thirteen. Foreman trainee, fourteen forty-seven, minimum fifteen fifty, and the lead foreman, um, minimum twenty-one, current nineteen dollars and eighty-nine cents an hour. Now, Ms. Gandy, I did have one question, you had superintendent at a minimum pay rate of twenty-five, but we currently don't have a superintendent, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. When, when all of public work was how...
That is correct. When, when all of public work was housed, when all of the divisions were housed under one, one public works title, all of the divisions, including street, water, wastewater, sanitation, had a superintendent, and then you had your foreman, your operators, and on down to laborers. That was four, all of them. Well, when Ms. Boyd, who was superintendent, was promoted to department head, that position was never spilled or removed or wasn't budgeted or what have you.
So that, that's, that would essentially be a new position if we ever decided to create that position.
Exactly. And which is the same, the same chart that Edward and Terry have presented. It's the same, it's basically, it's the same thing that you're looking at, with the exception to above foreman would be a title of superintendent. The only difference is where Edward has maintenance workers, I have maintenance workers, and then beneath that, I have laborers. Because I have several divisions, and I don't have equipment operators per se for landscaping. I do have equipment operators for landfill and for sanitation, both commercial and residential division.
So you're wanting to add a superintendent position?
Yes.
And will the annual salary be?
I think about 50, yeah, 52.
52,000?
Yes.
What's your annual salary now?
56.
That's pretty strong for...
I didn't hear that. What's yours?
56. Well, that would put him in line to where the other superintendent is, if we ever made that move. That's where the other superintendent for another division is currently.
Such as?
Street.
I don't know that we would add that at this point.
But again, like, that is a progression. I know that's not something that we can get to tonight, or tomorrow, or in another couple of weeks or what have you. But that is the plan. That's our goal, to work towards those positions, moving those employees into those slots as they become, you know, on board approval.
And, and in fairness, this, this rate progression plan that we approved, or not that we approved, that was presented to get everybody to $10 and up, is going to affect everyone up to the foreman, trainee level. So if it is the pleasure of this board for all three rate progression plans, I will take those as presented and after factoring in the increases above $10 an hour, come back with a cost estimate of what those progression plans would cost us in addition to this.
You've had, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Go ahead.
You've got two that need to be considered, that didn't present theirs at this time. I think they might have thought they would present these later. There's one for fire, and Herman was not included in this last year. Part of that was probably because of the transition. Stephanie is working on a partial plan for Herman. With what Stephanie's got right now, Herman's workforce is not such where it would probably fit to apply the full progression plan that these other departments were looking at, but she's got at least the maintenance worker positions that she thinks she can put in the plan. So I would ask, as we're considering those three, that we add those.
Okay. And, and what I would suggest is that we come back at our, our next meeting, and I can present detailed information on the cost for those plans, and we'll look at this other tonight. The other, thank you, Ms. Gandy. Appreciate that. Mr. Yarborough, do you want to come up and briefly speak to the requested pay increase for LaShonda?
LaShonda, good afternoon, board. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor. LaShonda's been with us for 23 years. She is, I said, the backbone of our department. She takes care of everything that needs to be taken care of. And she is, we feel, she's behind on pay. She's a little bit behind. I think, maybe she's inconsistent, so see if we can get her brought up to that pay. So I think it's like a $4,000 increase.
It was, you were requesting $4,190 increase?
Yes.
Yeah, good. And then also, we're looking, based on the grant you have written, if that's funded to fill those fire station...
Right. Now, let me speak to that. You spoke about it earlier.
Right.
On the grants, they actually started issuing grants on the AFG side, which is the equipment side. So right now, they're in the third round, probably 20 rounds. So right now, we haven't been called yet, but in Mississippi, so far, six voluntary departments have been received money, and three career departments. So I think we're going to be okay on that with the recommendations from the cornerstone and might change. I think we'll be okay on that. That's where our equipment comes in, if I were, we talked about Apex and stuff like that, so we're going to have to try to do something with that. So the SABR grant, which is the firefighter, started issuing this month, so we're not sure.
Right.
It's a very competitive grant. You've got people all over the nation putting in for you. Mayor may not get it, but I did apply this time. We'll apply every time to see if we get it. But I think, even with that one, I think we'll be okay. Because the last time we got to the last two rounds, we didn't get the funding, but he told me to put it in this time again, which I did, so hopefully we get that. So that's where we had on those two grants.
If that grant is funded, we have to fund one firefighter?
No, if that grant is funded, you won't have to fund any firefighters.
So we don't have to fund?
Right. Two years. We'll be...
We don't have to match that grant with anything?
We do have to match the grant. That's right. I'm sorry. We do have to match the grant. It'd be 20-something thousand dollars, I think 20, $3,000 to match that grant.
Which was about one?
A little bit less than one firefighter.
Okay. I was, I was thinking we had one, somewhere around one firefighter to match that.
That'd be good for two years, and after the two years, we could reapply for extension on that for another two years.
Right.
I always try that first. If not, then the board would be responsible for funding for those six firefighters, which would get us to where we needed to have Station Five completely filled on all three shifts.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Budget chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Chief Yarborough, you are before us tonight. In addition to asking for this salary increase for your administrative assistant, I noticed that you're also requesting a job title change for her to executive administrative assistant.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I notice, of course, understand that you will be bringing your progression plan back to us regarding your firing. And I was definitely concerned about that because the document that I requested and was provided to me by interim Hema Resource Director Ms. Halbert, you have a total of 23 firemen on here who are making far less than $10. Many of them are only making $9.50. So I'm glad to know that you'll be bringing a progression plan for. Chief, let me ask you this. What is the time, how many, how many personnel do you have in the police department?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. And what is the title of your administrative assistant?
Staff support technician.
Staff support technician. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank both of you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. The final request, in addition to Mr. Peters, Mr. Peters, you want to come up? In addition to your progression plan, you were also requesting to hire a sports coordinator position at $30,000, and a facility manager, a maintenance manager at somewhere between 40 and $45,000. So that would be a total of, right at $70,000 in additional personnel.
Correct, but it's already in the budget line. It was in our budget when we moved over, and it was moved to another line to be used.
That money was moved to, I guess, maintenance line to fund some maintenance in those areas, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, it's, I guess, maybe the most accurate way I could be describing this is, and I don't know the full history of it, because I think some of it took place before Parks was brought back in to the city. It was a position that was never actively pulled out of the budget, but his budget has been modified to the point where that position is not currently budgeted for in his position. So the position wasn't eliminated, but on last year's budget, he could not have funded this position.
The revenues have been moved. I mean, the expenses moved to other areas. Okay. Thank you, sir.
One question. I meant, I meant to suppose, call on this, you have, do you have one now?
Just one.
You need two.
Need two.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peters, in the past, you, at one time, you did have two sports coordinators.
We did.
Am I correct? That's what I, thank you so much.
Mr. Lincoln, I don't know that you have any personnel items, or if you're even prepared to speak tonight. We can always hear yours at the next meeting if you have other ones you wish to be heard. Okay. Thank you. So board, really tonight, I would like to offer up one motion that, if you've had a chance to look at the pay progression on the $10-an-hour, if you're comfortable with that, I'd like to offer that as a motion that we adopt that, and that will allow us to then go back and, we've already passed a motion that we're going to pay at least $10 an hour July 1 next year. We've got to get there some way. This is the fairest way I see to get there. So I would offer, we adopt this as the way to get to that $10 an hour by July 1, 2017. That will allow the opportunity for me to go back and reevaluate all of these progression plans and see how those are going to affect the budget in the long term and short term for next year as well. And also, I would like to go ahead and make the motion also to include the increase for the current court clerks, to get them in line with the deputy clerks in the city clerk's office, which would be a pay increase of 15% for them, and hold off on the additional full-time or part-time until we have a chance to see how that's going to affect the budget as well. So Mayor, my motion is to adopt the proposal for the current court clerks to increase their pay 15% each, and to adopt the presented documentation to effectively get salaries up to a minimum of $10 per hour for all city employees that are full-time benefits-receiving employees effective July 1, 2017.
What's the court clerk pay immediately?
It'll be October 1.
October 1. All right. So the motion I have, Alderman Maynard, is to increase the current court clerk's pay by 15% effective October 1, 2016, and to adopt the adjustments in pay to accommodate raising the minimum salary of a full-time city employee to $10 an hour as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
$10 an hour, July 1.
Oh, yeah, excuse me. Effective July 1, 2017. Let me read it one more time, just the second part, just to make sure we're on the same page. It's a motion to adopt adjustments in pay to bring all full-time city employees up to a $10 per hour minimum wage as presented effective July 1, 2017. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded, filed, and all of the manner you wish to speak on the merits.
No, sir.
Mr. Rook?
That language should say deputy court clerk.
You said court clerk.
There's a big mistake here.
Oh, okay.
Deputy court clerk.
All right. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to amend the motion?
Yes, sir.
And then, we'll treat that as clerical. Without objection, the motion will be amended to increase the current deputy court clerk's rate of pay by 15% effective October 1, 2016. Alderman Maynard, is that the way you wish the motion to be read?
Yes, sir.
Without objection. All right, sing none, back and discuss. Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor of Alderman Maynard's motion, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. It is unanimous. The next...
I got one more.
Yeah, Alderman Maynard?
Yeah. So our next meeting, I'll come back with that information on pay progression. I also want to look at Chief Yarborough, at the other administrative assistants within the city. I agree that she's been there a long time. She's doing a wonderful job, but I think we would be remiss if we didn't take a look at all of the administrative assistants within the city, just to make sure we're being equitable across, across the board. So that's the reason I didn't include anything on that. And then I'll come back at the next meeting and present for Parks and Rec, I think that's going to be another discussion that involves adoption of the Parks and Rec plan that was put forth. We really need to have a discussion, a long discussion, about the future of Parks and Rec, and really what positions we want to see there, and how we're going to support those positions in the future, and where that funding's going to come from as well. So I'll bring that back. Mayor, thank you.
All right. The next matter on the agenda is a request for approval for, did I hear a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion has been made, Baldorman Carver, to approve of the airport board establishing an airport domain registration and web hosting for three years for the airport webpage that costs not to exceed $500 as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Baldorman, when? Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion, any discussion, any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a motion has been made, Baldorman Carver, to approve of the city's Starbuck claims documented for all departments, including the Starbuck Utilities Department, as of June 29, 2016, for fiscal year ending September 30, 2016, as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, Baldorman, when? Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Alderman Carver?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions in this last item. I want Mr. Rook to come up for just a moment. I want to ask you a question, one for the finance director. And I was not going to mention anything about this, but this, when I looked at page number two, this just glaringly got my attention. I understand, Mr. Rook, that your court has original jurisdiction of all arrests made by Starbuck Police Department in the city of Starbuck. Is that, is that correct? I noticed on the claim, and I'm just going to read from the claim document, I'm just not making anything up here, but it says here, Octavia Hall County Justice making anything up here, but it says here, Octavia Hall County Justice Court, post a 6/28/2016, John Yates DUI transfer 6/2/16 for $1,111. And next line, Octavia Hall County Justice Court, 6/28/2016, Georgia Lindley DUI transfer 6/22/16. My two-part question is, I'm asking the finance director why we're paying this amount of money. And I know that, you know, and of course, I don't practice in this court because of conflict of interest with my being on the board. And I never have since I've been on the board, not in this municipal court, but all those I have. But my question here is, with this court having original jurisdiction over arrests made in the city of Starfall by police officers, why are, you know, very few cases that I'm aware of, and of course, if, maybe y'all looking at these, a high-profile case, but, you know, we have one high-profile case pending right here now in this justice court, didn't get transferred. I'm not asking you to transfer it, but I just need to know why, you know, I mean, and I don't see a conflict of interest in my opinion. Of course, I'm not the, the judge here, but just tell me why, you know, with this court transferred jurisdiction, or not jurisdiction, why would it transfer this case over to another court when we have four court sessions? I know we don't have, we have plenty of time on Monday afternoons, Monday evenings, Wednesday, and on Thursday, we have four court sessions. So, you know, it seems like if, we need to have some objective policy. And I'm not trying to get into the business of being a judge or running your court, but I'm just, I saw it on the claim document, it's only relevant for me to ask. Could you answer that question, please, sir?
Absolutely. I can explain, explain this very easily. Mr. Yates, this Jay Yates, he has a personal relationship with the judge. And so, to avoid any image of impropriety, the judge transferred that case to, to justice court. And the second case, as we know, is the former chief Lindley. And since her husband worked with the Starfall Police Department, the judge sits on the Starfall Police Department cases, the judge felt it would be best to avoid any image of impropriety there as well.
My last question. And again, I'm not trying to dictate anything. And of course, you know, the former chief does not work for the Starfall anymore, you know. And I'm not, let me just close out by saying this. There are a number of cases, even with the case with the, the former football player. I mean, everybody in Starfall knows him. So, I mean, all I want to say, and I'm not trying to micromanage or anything, but this was glaringly before my eyes. Y'all done a great job. You know, I'm just a, a straight down the middle person down the road, but we just need to be consistent in handling these cases here. And it's not critical, but I had to address it because, you know, and, and I know how these cases, I'm in justice court a lot, and, and, you know, we have four court sessions. And, and, you know, the former chief is no longer with us. I mean, you know, I mean, there's no, I mean, he doesn't have any relative working force. And some, you know, we have four court sessions, you know. We, and we try to pay our staff good to take care of these cases that happen in our jurisdiction. Justice court has a big caseload, I'm sure as it is. So, I just want to be consistent because if you got an argument, even with the case involving the former football player and some of the other high-profile cases, these cases get prosecuted in this court. And, you know, we need to be consistent and treat these cases alike. If you get defense counsel coming up here in these other cases, they want to transfer too. So, you're gonna start sending all the cases to justice court. So, this is a very relevant concern of mine. And I just wanted to ask that question. That's why I wanted you to stay here. And, and I'm gonna keep bringing this up here every time I see some more. And, and, you know, and, and, you know, transferring this case here, I mean, I don't see any relevance. I mean, but, you know, that's the judge, but, but just make the court aware. You know, we just need some consistency. And again, you know, get other high-profile cases that we love to, you know, go to, you know, you know, I don't know what this is, why this, why this is the case, okay? That's all for you. But Miss, Madam, hold, hold, yes, sir.
Can I?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's not a time issue. It's not whether or not they're high-profile. It's a personal relationship the judge had. And we only do this a handful of times a year. For example, the Dak Prescott case, we're going forward with. The judge doesn't know. And anytime the judge has any potential image of impropriety, he consults the judicial candidates. And as you know, that's a call he makes. He orders us to send it, and he orders us to send it. And we have to send it now. As far as the dollar amount, I, I don't...
The clerk, the financial director addressed that. But I, but I don't think, I'm just saying, and I'm not, again, I'm not micromanaging. I'm not getting into y'all's operations. But I don't think, I'm just saying, let's just make sure we're consistent. If there's a conflict, there's a conflict. If there's not one, I mean, that's what we pay y'all for.
Yes, sir.
But, but we appreciate you. I mean, this clean, good, straight talk. I mean, nothing with that, okay?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rook, thank you for a great job here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, let me ask you one final question. Thank you, Mr. Rook. I'm done with you.
Wait a minute. Mr. Rook, Mr. Rook, wait a minute.
Alderman Perkins, yield his floor.
Right. Finance director, we addressed what those dollar amounts for. One for the Georgia Lindley, $5,000, and Jay Yates for $1,111. I mean, why are we, explain that to the mayor and the board and vice mayor?
Vice mayor, those are bond, cash bonds.
Okay.
That those defendants posted with the city.
Right.
Okay, so...
And we're transferring those cash bonds over to...
Once I heard those dollar amounts again, then that is consistent with cash bonds.
Okay. So, so they, so they put up a cash bond as opposed to going through the bail bonds?
Yes, sir.
I see. So, that's, this is how y'all do it over here. Just it was a cash bond?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Alderman Win?
One question, Mr. Rook. If you don't mind me asking, who is the, the counsel that is representing Mr. Dak Prescott?
That's Jay Perry.
Jay Perry. Thank you so much.
July, July 20.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 By a vote of five in favor with two against, and I have Perkins involved against, the motion passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request, the motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of lease purchase agreement with Regions Equipment Finance Corporation in the amount of $46,000 over three years at 1.6% interest for the lease purchase of a Parks and Recreation pool of equipment as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. And lest anyone say that we are not frugal, we did just lease purchase a liner for... The next matter on the agenda is a request for permission to, Alderman Carver?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Carver's made a motion to approve of the renewal of annual membership to the Wellness Connection for amount, the amount of $7,000 as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Maynard. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion?
I got one question. Chief Yarber, do you know how many firemen took advantage of that?
How many, the hour five, these two families?
Okay.
The hour five, those nine hours?
I see quite a few of them. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for, motion has been made by Alderman Carver to authorize the hire of a temporary full-time employee to fill in as labor in the San Fasian and Environmental Services Department as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is a request for...
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to hire Shannon Brooks to fill the vacant position of deputy court clerk in the Starfall Municipal Court Department as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that this individual will fall into that increase October 1.
Yes. Without objection, Alderman Carver, are you comfortable amending the documents presented with this to reflect the 15% pay increase that's been added tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any objection to that change? Saying no objection, the motion will be changed to reflect that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda...
Same move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve the advertisement to fill the vacant position of apprentice lineman at Starfall Utilities Department as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. Next matter on the agenda is Alderman Carver's made a motion to approve of a salary adjustment and job title change from equipment operator, John T. Rogers, to lineman helper as presented. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman, let alone, Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to advertise to fill vacant position of radio operator records clerk in the police department.
Same move.
Motion's been made by Alderman, Alderman Maynard to authorize the advertisement to fill the vacant position of radio operator records clerk dispatcher in the police department as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes.
Mayor, may I be questioned?
You may.
Chief, on this next item, the purchase of these, this mobile CAD system at $262,212.56, that is the funds that you were speaking of earlier?
Yes, sir.
So, with that, mayor, I would move approval of the purchase of equipment and software necessary to implement the mobile CAD system for the Starfall Police Department as quoted in the amount of $262,212.56 after the funds are received and deposited and confirmed by the finance director. Because I'm concerned that those funds are gonna be swept by the lieutenant governor, and I don't want us to put $262,000 purchase out there and us not get those funds.
Understood.
So, I've reduced that part to writing, mayor.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard. It's been reduced to writing. It's been read and placed with city clerk. Yeah. Without objection, I want to ask for it to be reread. Saying none. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization to advertise for bids for the purchase of garbage bags.
Move, move.
Motion has been made by Alderman Vaughn to authorize the advertisement for bids to purchase garbage bags as presented. Alderman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alderman Maynard?
I just, do we want to consider maybe cutting the garbage bags in half and just giving half as many?
Further discussion?
Just had to throw it out there.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. By a vote of six in favor with one against, and I have Maynard against, this motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is a request for authorization for Starfall Utilities to accept the lowest and best of two valuable bids submitted by Mitsubishi.
Same move.
Motion has been made by, was it Maynard? Alderman Maynard to authorize for Starfall Utilities to accept the lowest and best of two valuable bids submitted by Mitsubishi Electric Power Products Incorporated for a 13-kV vacuum circuit breaker for $98,336 as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda...
Move approval.
Motion has been made by Alderman Little to request, request approval of an agreement between the City of Starfall and Oxtac Water Association for emergency water connection and joint billing of Oxtac Water Association water service and Starfall Utility Service as presented. Alderman Little, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Win. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion clearly passes. And with that, we have exhausted the open session portion of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session? Motion's been made by Alderman Little to go into closed session to determine whether there's a need for an executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Walker. Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none. Please signify by saying aye.